So if anybody can't hear, please feel free to grab your chair and move up if you have a hard time hearing.
We can hear you.
Okay, good afternoon and welcome to the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake, meeting of council held here at the temporary council chambers of Hockey Heritage for February the 20th. Before we start our meeting, we have some notices to read. Council will hold a public meeting on February 27, 2018, for the purpose of hearing a rezoning application for Kirkland Lake Gold at 1350 Government Road East. Also, council will hold a public meeting on March 6 for the purpose of hearing a rezoning application for Goose Village Investments, Inc. at 51 Fourth Street. We'll have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. I will have the approval of the agenda.
I have a motion that's moved by councillor Barker, seconded by councillor Kylie. The council approves the agenda for its regular meeting of February 20, 2018, with the removal of, under petitions and delegations, Mike Mayhew from Artisan, and the removal of number eight, notice of motion by councillor Kylie.
All in favor? It's carried, thank you. Okay, under petitions and delegations, Eric Nielsen from Ontario Clean Water Agency. Eric, you're going to come up and discuss year-end report and preliminary report on the FE slash MN removal from the water.
This has sort of become our annual, annual meeting to let you know how we made out in 2017 and about some of our planning for 2018 with respect to the water and wastewater treatment in Kirkland Lake. We now, just a bit of an update of the way we've, the way we're structured, we now have 18 employees that start their day in Kirkland Lake every, every day. Kirkland Lake has become sort of a central location for our cluster. Our cluster operates as far east as Virginia Town and then down in Inglehart and Metatchuan and Elk Lake as well, so, but this has become the central hub for the cluster. And we now have, you know, I'm happy to say we have six more people have moved into town. So they're coming in, they're buying their goods, they're buying their houses, they're bringing their mates. So, so we're growing and we're helping to grow the community as well. And you have to remember that since it's a central location, you know, a lot of the, in order to do our job, we're buying lots of parts, we're hiring local contractors, we have to buy our vehicles, we have to buy our fuel, and this is all fueling Kirkland Lake during this, as we work here in Kirkland Lake. When we think about our partnership, the way it works, the town ultimately is, you're responsible for your facilities, you own the facilities, right? How do we work with you? Well, we operate and maintain the facilities. You seek to minimize cost, we provide valuable service at a competitive rate. You invest in the infrastructure to ensure the system longevity, safety and quality for the community, while we manage the infrastructure to extend the equipment life and reduce capital costs. So we just don't come in here and, and, you know, this pump is, should say, should, you know, manufacturers say this pump is going to last 20 years and then every 20 years we're just going to pull it and throw a new one in. No. What we do is we do our best to make sure that pump's going to last 30 years or 35 years through regular maintenance and whatnot. You have to prove compliance with provincial and federal regs, and we provide the training and the systems and the people to ensure that we're compliant with all the regs. Okay? So that's the way we work together. Another thing we're doing, and we're doing this throughout our region, but we chose Kirkland Lake as one of the, as one of the places is what we call our One Water Program. So what we do is we want to raise awareness of water and wastewater treatments and challenges, and we start with kids that are in, this is, these are kids that are in grade seven. We're going into the classroom and we talk to them that it's, you know, when you flush your toilet, it just doesn't go under the house somewhere and something good happens. And when you twist your tap, it's not as simple as a bunch of good water coming out. We teach them what's involved in doing this kind of work. And also, we teach the kids at the same time that it doesn't matter what your background is, if you're a mad scientist, that's great, if you want to drive a truck, that's great, if you, if you're really mechanical, that's great, if you're electrical, good, if you can write, good. So whatever talent these kids may have, we encourage them to get into this kind of industry because it's such a wide industry that all their talents can be put to work. So it gives the kids, it gives the kids, they can see a future, right? They all don't, you know, not all their parents are going to send them away to become lawyers, all these kids can see a future. All right, so some of the things that we've done as a region, we've purchased, you'll see the picture at the bottom, it's an automated valve turner. A lot of towns, they'll have issues with their old valves and old infrastructure, and these valves haven't turned in 20 years. This guy is able to come in and it'll work these valves open. At the same time, it has a GPS on it, so now you can identify where every valve in your town is. Most towns, you know, this town probably has 875 valves, we can identify where each one of them are. We bought a closed-circuit television camera for inspecting pipes and taking a look at, you know, we can assess inflow and infiltration and whatnot with our pipes. We have smoke testing ability, and, and most importantly, we have our Ontario Emergency Response Team, our ERT team. And so we're prepared, if there's a major disaster anywhere, we're prepared to, to put a team together and go to respond to that, whether the town is a client of ours or not, but throughout Ontario. So that's a ministry that environment mandated job for aquas to be prepared to address any situation, so. That's, that's over and above what we bring to the table as, as your partner. Every time I speak, we always start with health and safety, so we'll address that first. In the northeastern region, we had zero lost time accidents in 2017. In our cluster in particular, we had one near miss. And so what, we've started with the near miss reporting, we believe in the safety triangle where it's used in industry where if you have so many near misses and you don't address them, then they're eventually going to lean towards a certain amount of accidents. Then that's going to lean towards a certain amount of lost time accidents if you don't address, that's going to lead to a death. So our mandate is to address these at the bottom of the triangle, when it's a near miss, you address and try to improve. We have monthly safety meetings and plant inspections. Every morning when the guys come into work, we do a safety huddle. And we also have non-routine hazardous tasks, we call them tailgate meetings. So if we're going to tackle a job that's a little different and it's not part of our routine, then we're not going to rely on the automated mind, we're going to address it and bring it into our conscience, so we're cautious, conscious of each job we do. So like I said, these tailgate forums and meetings for non-routine work, so we did them, just some examples, whenever we do chlorine work, we call that non-routine, we do it with our chlorine dioxide trial, we did it all the time, whenever we do tower work or decanting modifications, if we're going, you know, into a hole or something like that, we're always doing these. And I spoke to the near miss triangle. Each employee, each, in our cluster, we received, and this is averaged out, 29 hours of on-the-job training. So as our people are coming to work, we're always training them and training them and training them, I believe, and, and well-trained employees. And then they also received an additional 31 hours of ministry-approved training, so these are continuing education units that they get in order, first of all, to keep their licensing up to, up to snuff, and then, and then also as new information becomes available, new regulations, we like to train our people on that. We did 12 cluster safety meetings this year, just safety meetings on top of our regular training, so we talked about such items as WMS, lock and tag, SCBA, electrical, confined space, whole bunch of different topics, every month we'll bring up something. Again, zero lost time accidents and one near miss. Just wanted to bring this picture up, when we, when we look at the legislation and the regulations prior to the Walkerton disaster, this is what we had under the Ontario Water Resources Act, four or five things we had to do. And you have to keep in mind that these were times when very often water plants were manned 24 hours, seven days a week, right? And so, and they're dialing buttons and stuff like that, but the complexity now, post-Walkerton, right, it hasn't become a matter of tweaking knobs and firing up pumps. A lot of the work behind what we do is, is ensuring compliance and ensuring safety, improving safety and having a quality management standard system, right? So, and so that's in order, so we're always improving. Most of the idea behind most of these regs and legs is to improve all the time, and so this is always the direction we're heading. So speaking of compliance, if you remember our 2016 MOE inspection report, we got 100%. We just got inspected at the water plant on January 9 of this year, we just got a preliminary report in, and we had one non-compliance which had to do with, with jotting down chlorine numbers. So we spoke with, with your town engineer today and we were discussing that, and we still have some further discussions to do with the MOE on it. And we had one re-sample at Federal School on August 13. There was a background count of bacteria in the sample. The next sample came back clean, clean. The background count is, is just sometimes an indicator that there may be something wrong. So what we did, we went in, we re-sampled right away, everything was fine. The latest wastewater treatment plant was in 2014, we had no compliance issues, we haven't done one since, the next one's probably due in this year, or maybe next year. In 2017, we did two ultraviolet system unit bypasses due to heavy rainfall in May and October. We didn't bypass the whole plant like we used to in the old days, we had to bypass the one section of it because the filter, the UV system didn't want to handle all that flow. And we're exploring operational options to avoid that in the future, okay? So we're going to take this new plant that we have, and we want to be able to mold the way we work it so that we can, we can accept some heavy rainfalls and still have no issues, okay? So we're working with the MOE on that. Swastika sewage treatment plant, the most recent inspection was March of 14 again, and we did have plant bypasses, where we bypassed the entire plant with our spring runoff. And that's another issue that we're addressing with the, as we work on this Swastika to Kirkland Lake pumping project, that's one of the main issues we're looking at is we have to stop this kind of I and I, inflow and infiltration. We averaged 10,000 cubes a day, which is about 46% of our plant capacity at the water plant. We had a maximum day of 15,000, which was about 68% of our rated capacity. So these are days when either, you know, the fire downtown, it costs us some water, right? And when we do our flushing and whatnot, that uses some water. But just keep in mind, lots of capacity at the plant. When we're running at this 10,000 cubes, the plant, it's just, it's putting along, we can really, really put it to work on top of that if we had to. So just to address this Swastika sewage treatment plant project, Elvio was going to speak to this a bit more. It all started with a plant assessment in 2014, and the Kirkland Lake was presented with a plant assessment report indicating that we can, we can save some money, we can save the environment by pumping this, by pumping the sewage from Swastika into Kirkland Lake, followed by feasibility study, and, and this is where we are today. We're moving forward with the project, and it's funded, one-third funded. Okay, so what's good about this project? Well, first of all, we're going to stop donating anything to Otter Lake, all right? So the ministry and the government, they love regional treatment, so instead of polluting two places, there's only regional treatment going into one stream and going into one receiving stream from a much newer plant, all right? From a plant that has a, you know, affluent quality, that's pristine. It's going to reduce long-term operating costs, of course, because we're not going to have the chemicals out there, we're not going to have all the electricity out there, we're just simply going to have a pumping station, okay? And it's going to reduce risk, that's the big one, okay? If, whenever we have two plants, there's, there's a risk to running that plant, what might happen to the environment, what might happen to people working there, all these kind of things. Wastewater flows, we average 9,000 cubes a day, we can handle 40,000, so we're running about a quarter, that's perfect. It was designed to run beautifully at 13.6, but we did have, you see our maximum daily flow, 31,000 cubes, that's a lot of water. And again, that's during our spring runoff or during heavy rains. So we know that when it, we do have water coming into Kirkland Lake, either in the form of rain or spring runoff, we know that our sewage treatment plant is seeing a lot of that water. And so, you know, looking into the future, we have to think to, we have to think to address that, because every time we treat water that we didn't necessarily have to treat, that's costing each one of us money, okay? Swastika is designed for 1570, we averaged 562, and our biggest day that we were able to measure was 1,108 cubic meters. And again, that's during the spring. Some of the upgrades we did in 2017, we tested and converted to a new polymer addition, okay? So it, the, the old system of using this activated silica was very complex, there was 37 steps just into making a batch of this stuff. So if anything went wrong along the way, it was a disaster for the, so it just wasn't working well. It worked well during its time, there's new polymers out there today that we incorporated that are doing the job much simpler and, and essentially far more effectively than the old stuff was. It's just better. And Anthony and the team at the, at the wastewater treatment plant enhanced our digester supernate pipe, so what that did is it's, Anthony was able to, to use our centrifuge less and less often. So again, we're going to save power and we're going to save manpower in order to operate this, this piece of equipment during the process. More upgrades, two new high lifts, the, the last of the four high lifts were installed, complete with VFDs. Again, because of the fact that they're new pumps, they were old, 200 horsepower pumps in the old days, we were able to replace them with 150s and still do the exact same job. And we put variable frequency drives in there, so they, they don't have to fire up and run at full pop, they can run down to where they're needed, and that, that again saves further electricity. And it makes the, and it, and there's no, there's no hammering on the pipes, everything's smooth. When they start up, they're smooth, when they shut off, they're smooth, okay? And on top of that, since we can prove that to Infrastructure Ontario that we saved, that we're saving electricity with the install of the pumps, the town got a rebate for this too. So on top of the fact that you're going to save electricity into the future, we get a bit of kickback for doing the job in the first place. Preventative maintenance, so I just want to, you know, we have to make clear that our operators aren't always running around and they take a sample here and a sample there and they tweak knobs, they don't. There's a lot, just keeping your place running, we did 170 work orders, just preventative work orders last year for your place, right? So almost every day that they go into work, there's a, there's a preventative maintenance program going on in your equipment, and this is how we're making your equipment last into the future, okay? They're always based on manufacturer recommendations, so we either meet them or enhance them, okay? So, and then we do emergency work orders and then corrective work orders along the way, okay? And all this is, all this is done through a work order management system. So when the guys come into work, it's already letting them know, you have to address this pump today, it's due for maintenance. Moving forward, we did our rest rate assessment study back and we started to enhancement in 2017, we're going to follow that plan. One finding on the MOE report was to, was to reduce water use throughout the municipality. We average in this, in town about 890 liters per person per day. That's about three times as much as what we see throughout Canada. So our water usage is high. When we have high water usage, we have to, we have to make it, and we have to use the chemicals to make it, we have to pump it out. These are costs that can be avoided if we can seek some, some water efficiency programs. So we can either, you know, we can do that through education, say, okay, let's have some conservation programs. We can think about metering, we can think about leak detection, you know, operating modifications, do we reduce the pressure a bit? You know, all these kind of things, but these are in cooperation with the, with the town to decide what can we do to work together to reduce the amount of water we work, and even awareness, yes?
Yeah, Eric, the water usage per person at 390 does seem high. Could that be partly because of the brown water issues, people were running their taps during the winter? Would that play into that?
It, it may have played into it a bit last year, it certainly could have. But there's also things that we have to consider on top of this stuff, you know, we do have a, we do have a pool, that, you know, and, and sometimes when the averages come in for this, we, they don't consider that maybe there's lots of municipalities in Canada that don't necessarily have a community pool. So that costs water, our splash park costs water, you know what I mean? So there, there are other sources. In the meantime, we do know that there is, you know, some leakage and whatnot, we have some old infrastructure and we're addressing that as much as we can. And you're right, there could have been some of the usage from the brown water last year as well.
Also, Eric, people, they let the, the water run all, all winter to prevent freezing from their pipes, is there anything to fix that or prevent that?
So that would be something where we, where we work together and say, okay, how can we, instead of just running it to a bleeder at a dead end, we have lots of bleeders throughout town, Don knows the exact number, but we have bleeders throughout town in order to prevent freezing and whatnot. So we, we would think into the future and do a cost-benefit analysis and say, okay, instead of just draining it out to the environment somewhere, what if we looped it? And we tied it into another part of, of existing infrastructure? So now we're not losing anything, you know, and you can, you know, just, these are just ideas. We, we put an inline pump, so now we make sure we keep the water flowing the way we want it to flow, so it won't get stale in the dead ends and whatnot. But these are just thoughts, just to raise awareness that, that going into the future, it was easy in 1970 to, to let the water go somewhere. Power, power didn't cost us a thing, water was abundant, you know, these are different, these are different times. Power is super, super expensive, so if we can avoid pumping it, let's, all right? So these are just things to consider for the future. Okay, so January 9, we started up our, our iron and manganese removal system to address what councillor Kylie was just talking about, our brown water issue. So we went through a few years where it was getting a little more and more difficult for me to, to walk downtown, and so I'm glad to say that things are a little bit better this year. And so actually, I'm going to, Anthony has been, Anthony was behind this project and was the, sort of the idea behind the implementation and whatnot, so I'm going to let Anthony speak to this part of the presentation.
Hey, guys. So.
You have to hit.
I got that figured out now, good, 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 thanks, got my back. Okay, so, so in November, guys, we started to see those manganese numbers start to climb, right? And actually, when we were looking at the water, we could actually see a bit of a tinge coming out of the water, right? And then, so then, you know, we got through to the beginning of January and we were able to get that system in. And, and once we put that system in, we were able to kind of tweak the, the amount of chlorine dioxide we were putting in the system, and we were able to actually oxidize all the iron and most of the manganese before the filters. And so as, up here, you can kind of see those numbers, what we were able to do is, let's see here, we can see, we can see the, the finished waters. Here I have my, my raw waters written down here, so raw waters were 0.14 milligrams per liter for manganese. Oh, thank you, Eric, beautiful. So you can see our raw numbers right through the roof, and then you can see where we started that, the chlorine dioxide system, and those numbers for the manganese come right down, right down. Basically, the, the manganese threshold, the aesthetic threshold for manganese is 0.03. And so we are right around that level. You can see at the end of February, we had a little bit of, some tweaking issues, which we're still working on, but we're, we're dialing that dosage in. And, and as far as I know, we really haven't had any dirty water calls this year. We've had a few isolated incidents, incidences that I think were related to water main breaks and such, but I know last time, or last year at this time, man, it was, it was a pretty rough go, right? There was, there was hundreds of calls by this time, right? So I, I gotta say, I think if we can get through all the way, you know, past March here, I think we're going to be able to, to declare victory, right?
Yeah, it's good, good news. I, I just wanted to ask you one quick one. In the last few weeks, there's been some questions raised to me on, on the, some residents are smelling chlorine, you know, after brushing their teeth or washing their face, is that something that we should be concerned of, or?
No. So basically, the, the water, we've changed chemistry of water a little bit, so if there's any, if, you know, basically when you change the chemistry of the water, it has different effects on the pipes, right? And so we're kind of, you know, we kind of expect to have maybe some, some taste and odors in the, in the transitional phase, but once we get past this, we expect it to be, you know, normalized, right?
Okay, good, thank you. Councillor Morgan?
I could speak to that a bit more. Is, is some chlorine dioxide very often is used actually for taste and odor control in a lot of communities. So we are going to see that improve. We had, the, the majority of the odor concerns that we had were on January 10th and 11th, when we fired it up on the 9th, right? So it was just getting into the system, it smelled differently, it smelled differently in my house too. So there was no doubt that, that we were changing the, changing the water a little wee bit. Then the system went down about a week and a half later, and then when we fired it back up, again, we had the, we had some of the tastes in order. Chlorine, the dioxide, or the chloride, one of the products, when it gets into the system, it actually acts as a bit of a pipe cleaner. So it's getting rid of a, a very slight biofilm that's on the pipes. Now, I don't want to get, I don't want to, I don't want you to think that there's a layer of slime on the pipes. When I say biofilm, there's a lot of zeros in front of the actual number of, the amount of it. So it's very minuscule, but it's enough that our, that our senses are going to taste it.
So I guess my question is, for both, both of you, is how certain are you that we're going to be able to get rid of this odor? Because like in my address, I never had a brown water problem, but now I've got a problem with the smell of my water. The odor is quite intense at my house. I, I don't know, Pat, you're in my neighborhood? Yeah, because at my house, it's awful, like it's, it's a real chemical, it's not a chlorine smell, because chlorine we're used to, like, we smell that every winter when, but right now, like I'm getting a real sort of industrial smell when I turn my tap on. But you're confident we're going to be able to get rid of that?
Confident, and is it still persisting?
Oh, yes. No, I sent you an email the other day because I, it's back, it's back with a vengeance, like I'm still getting it. So like, at my address, we traded a problem for a different problem, so like I just, I, I just want you to be aware of that.
Oh, understood. So we'll work with, we'll, we'll work with, and we need this kind of information so that we can move forward and, and address it, right? So we'll probably work with, with Don's distribution crew on this and, and see what we can do to, to enhance it.
Yeah, and I think it's important to remember, we're still in the trial phase, right? So we're still tweaking, we're still perfecting, right? So, yeah, yeah.
I have every confidence that, you know, but it just, before we, you know, finalize this approach, I'd like to, you know, for me anyways, personally, it's just trading one problem for another right now, but I am, I'm just asking the question that you're confident we'll be able to get rid of that odor, okay?
You're still on? Oh. So, there we go, we did have some odor complaints, right?
Okay, so, so yeah, some taste and odor complaints, so mixing with water, that's really, we believe the main issue, you know, when we start the system up, like Eric says, we really had some, we had a number of taste complaints across the, across town. Old wa, old pipes, they can also cause an issue, right? So you, you get one type of, you know, you get, you get tuberculosis building up over the years, we introduce a new chemical, and it, it has a bit of a reaction, right? So we're expecting this just to be a phase, right? Yeah. So we're also dosing, we're, we're, like I say, we're tweaking, we're making the efficiency, we're like, we're tweaking the efficiency and charting, and we're, we're going to have, you know, by the end of this six-month trial, we'll have all that data compiled and we'll be able to, at that point, kind of weigh whether or not we want to move forward 100%. But from my perspective at this point, I mean, as far as brown water, we're, we're golden, right? Yeah.
We, this is, like Anthony said, right now, we still have to, we still have to put all of our data together even to know exactly where to run this unit, right? So we have to find out, okay, if we-
So we have to find out, okay, if we have raw water qualities like this, we have to set our machine to here. As the quality changes, we have to now set it to here. So we have to establish even a baseline chart of how to run it so that when we are very confident with the operation of the machine, then we can stick it into automated, right? So right now, it's automated that it that it knows how much to dose according to how much water we're making, but it doesn't know how much to dose according to the the raw water characteristics. Okay, so this is something that we have to plug into the machine in order to get it fully automated, okay?
Yeah, the last point on there is talking about pH control. We had to, one of the key processes of the system is to adjust the pH before you introduce the chlorine dioxide. So this was a bit of a challenge for us. We're now using soda ash and we have a new soda ash pump that's dosing and to achieve a pH of seven point three so that oxidation can be achieved. So, you know, I, this this is part of the the taste issue, too, right? Was was trying to to tweak that pH. So, yeah, we're, we're, we're making it through.
Okay, so as we move into two thousand eighteen and then beyond, one thing that that Samir and I have discussed is we want to make sure that that the rate assessment plan that we did do, we want to do our best to stick to it. Okay, we made that for a reason. We made the the entire reason behind doing that rate assessment plan was to make sure that that all our parts are going to last as much as we we can make them last, right? And make that plant so that when we're all done, that plant is still kicking along. So we want to make sure that we do our best to stick with that plan. And 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 this is something that on top of, and we're always gonna be surprised by little parts that break and all this kind of stuff, and we have to fix those. But we want to do our best to to stick with the plan. We'll coordinate it with you on an annual basis so that so that we know that we're sticking to what we said we were going to do. Because if we start to fall off, then the surprises will come. And there's nobody in this room that wants surprises. Okay? Like I said earlier, we have to at some point in the future, and and we can take different steps and take the low hanging fruit first and do the easy things first, but we have to think about influence and infiltration, right? This is, at the end of the day, it affects our environment, it affects our costs. Every time we affect, if we're affecting the environment, we're affecting costs. And and we're here to reduce our operating costs. And and our water production reduction plan, okay? Like I say, Kirkland Lake, we're almost triple. There's some things we're not going to avoid. We have a splash park. It's great for the kids, it's super popular. We're not gonna turn that off. But there are other ways that we can certainly find efficiencies.
So if there's any questions, feel free.
Councilor Kylie?
Yeah, Eric, previous Director of Physical Services, we brought this topic up once before. The water pressure pressure issues in Shapius. I know there are a number of people that have auxiliary pumps for backup because otherwise the water is just trickling from their taps. Was there anything done to improve that or change? Are you hearing any complaints or any issues on that in the past year?
I I have not heard complaints about low pressure in Shapius, to be honest with you. And and but, you know, aside from the work that we had done previously when we were when we were talking about our booster station feeding the mine, after that, I I hadn't heard much, to be to be honest with you. Now, if there are certain houses where we're getting some low pressure or some low flows, then certainly that can be looked at. When it comes to the system design and the the pressure that we're leaving the plant with and pressure areas throughout town, generally, generally, they're within our operating parameters of where we like to see these pressures. We don't want them too high, we certainly don't want them too low. So if there are certain areas where they're low, then then I'd really welcome to hear about that so that we can find out why, what's happening in, if it's a certain area, if it's a certain house, if it's a certain street. Then we can find out exactly what's happening and then have a plan to address it.
Yeah, it does seem sporadic because where Tom's mother lives, I think, pressure is fine. And where my brother-in-law is, ten houses up on the opposite side, he has the auxiliary pump. So there, he said there's ten or twelve people out there that do have these auxiliary pumps to beef up the pressure. So I'll have another chat with him. I'll bring it back and talk to you personally.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you, Eric and Anthony, for that presentation. You know, for several years, many years, Aqua looked after our wastewater. And just in two thousand and fourteen, because of the complexity and all the insurances needed to bring in clear, good drinking water, we 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 brought you on board. And following your presentation, I'm certainly glad that we did that. So thank you for coming. And I believe that we're also going to hear from LVO. LVO on the sewage treatment from SWAS two, the new treatment plant?
Thank you. Give you a quick update. We had a meeting this today, a status review meeting, and this is for the Sustika Water Pollution Control Plant. We're gonna decommission that plant and we're gonna pump that sewage from Sustika towards the KAL, the Kirkland Lake Wastewater Treatment Plant. Currently, there's two parts of this effort that we're doing. It's a mandated class environmental assessment. We have to do that for the province. And the second phase is the pre-design work. Give you a bit of an update of where we stand. We always do for every meeting, we have a safety moment. What people need to realize, and we have the public behind us, with construction on city projects, on the street, what people don't realize is that we've got construction, we've got equipment, we've got people like the public who walk by and are not aware of the issues. So we take a moment. And there is an example here of something that seems very innocent where when you walk down the street and you'll see all the pipes lined up, and you'll see the picture on the left with a skid and steer, multiple pipes in a straight line, two people standing. And this is an event that happened last year, actually in two thousand sixteen, and it's something that we want to tell people. On this particular case, this skid and steer piece of equipment moved very quickly, turned around and hit the pipe. Pipe one hit the second pipe, second pipe hit the third pipe. That third pipe swung out, and as you can see in the picture, it clipped a person. This person died. Now, here's an example where, in this particular case, it was down south, it was in the U.S. Here's a person who's semi-retired, wanted to keep on working, did multiple tours of duty in the military, and yet he has to come to a construction project to die. And something we want to say to everybody, even in the back, the unexpected risks of a construction site, what we refer to as a line of fire. The hunters know, you always watch where the bullet goes. The bullet will keep going. Now, in a construction site, we ask ourselves, where is the danger? And keep in mind, sometimes it's not at the machine, it's in the length of where the energy travels. In this particular, in particular case, it was the piping. We look at the stationing of equipment. We ask ourselves now, when we see layouts of piping, why are they lined up touching when they're on the side, ready to be installed? Let's offset them a bit. Let's keep a few feet between them. Let's rotate them a bit. Let's do different things so they're not touching. We have equipment in operation. We ask our people, we want to emphasize to everybody, when there's heavy equipment, you have to be alert all the time. Keep in mind here, there's many employees and there's many different contractors that can be working together. So because one group is working on one side, there could be another group working somewhere else that could affect this. And skid steer equipment, it's a very small piece of equipment. People see large excavators, large front-end loaders, and they think big equipment's risky, dangerous. Here's a good example of a very small piece of equipment that was three to four pipes away, roughly a hundred feet away, and it's still able to kill somebody. So there's a takeaway for everybody today. We have to be very careful when we're on the city street and we see construction equipment. The agenda that we had today, one, the purpose of this meet, of the meeting that we had earlier today, a review meeting, we reviewed the draft ESR, which is the Environmental Study Report. That is the report under the Class Environmental Assessment. We went through a schedule, the status review of the schedule and what we see, and we spoke to the next steps. The purpose of the meeting that we had today was to review the Environmental Study Report. We had a PIC, a Public Information Center, approximately two months ago, in in Sustika. That presented the information that we had developed on hand. We received comments from people. We sent a questionnaire and we got comments back from them. And that's been put into this report. We're reviewing the draft now with the Project Steering Committee. That report will be released in the coming weeks. When we looked at the draft, the draft was issued several, a few weeks ago, beginning of the month. We have reviews that have been done by Aqua and we have a review log and we've gone through every comment that we received. And we go to, we we go through a response of everything of each of those comments and we're, we're reviewing that with the Technical Steering Committee. It's an open discussion forum that we have with the committee to fine tune the report, to make sure we cover off everything that needs to be covered and everybody's comfortable with that report and the preferred solution. Again, we all know that we're gonna decommission a sewage plant and we're gonna pump the sewage from Sustika to the Kirkland Lake sanitary system. Now, we're looking at where is the pipe gonna be routed? It's on Government Road, yes, but are we gonna locate a pumping station where? What kind of upgrades? That sort of thing. That's what this report speaks to. Schedule, the Class EA, the environmental assessment, the environmental assess, sorry, the Environmental Study Report of the Class EA is near complete. We're gonna finish this in the coming weeks. The next phase of work is the pre-design or preliminary design. We're gonna finish that in March with its report due in April. Survey and geotechnical work. There's gonna be topographic survey work and geotechnical investigations along Government Road, but because of the snow, we've, we're considering deferring it into the spring after the spring melts so they have better access. Total budget, remaining budget, we're about sixty-two percent of the budget right now. We're more than halfway complete on this, on this effort that we have. Whatever budget's left over, it gets carried forward into the next phases of the project. So budget-wise, we're in good shape. When we look at the next steps, this is a little bit of a detail here. The Class EA is the very top portion of the box, two steps on this, on the effort on hand. We're doing a Class EA, the Class Environmental Assessment. The second part is the preliminary design. All the gray is what's already been done. When it gets to the Class Environmental Assessment phase of work, it's the last item that we have to do. We have to file notice of completion. It's a regulatory requirement for the completion of the report. That should be done in the coming weeks. We expect that to be happening beginning of March. When we look at the preliminary design, we're about a quarter done on the preliminary design. We've got, and the next quarter's gonna happen in in February, we'll finish those off and then finalizing the rest of the the work in March with the report due in April. Again, the topographic survey and geotechnical investigation along Government Road, we'll defer that to when the the snow melt, the snow's gone, so they have access to, better access to do what they need to do. Questions?
Question, Councilor Kylie?
Yeah. Just to confirm, this is a two-year project. Is that, is that a fair estimate to completion?
Correct. We will be detailed design after this. We hope to tender, we expect to tender late this fall. Our target is to to tender into the fall so we can get two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen pricing. And then we will go into construction in two thousand nineteen. I would have to think, there might be some construction that carries into the winter of two thousand nineteen, twenty.
No other questions? Okay, well, thank you, LVO, for the update. And we look forward to the next one. Thank you. Thanks, fellas.
Okay, under item four, petitions and delegations, the next is Patrick, Patrick Adams, Kirkland Lake Taxpayers Association. Hello, welcome. Just make sure your your mic is on, please. There should, green, the the green light should be, there you go. There you go.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Truly, before I start, I want to say thank you for choosing this beautiful venue as your temporary home. It's completely accessible to all taxpayers and was the right choice. Thank you very much. So who we are? We are a group of taxpayers to the town of Kirkland Lake. We were formed in October twenty seventeen, shortly after it was announced that we were in a financial crisis. We have a board of nine members. Our purpose is to engage the citizens of Kirkland Lake and advocate on their behalf for responsible municipal fiscal management. We have a board, we have a president, Stacy Wright, vice president, Mike Romaine. I am the speaker. We have a treasurer, Judy Sims, secretary, Kelly Gudori, and non-position voting members, Shannon Smith, Bev Kidd, and Dale Sims. Our core values is fiscal responsibility, transparency, and fair tra, fair taxation. As being a member of this board, we have heard many concerned citizens, especially seniors, express their fear of increased taxes and how they will continue to live, afford their house, utilities, groceries, and other expenses. We are pleased with the increased public engagement on many issues and commend the new direction of transparency. Our goals is to encourage and work with council to work towards establishing reserve funds, as we're clearly flying at the seam of our pants and we have some long-term planning that'd be beneficial to all taxpayers. Have a system of checks and balances. Have a transparent budget, similar to what other communities are able to provide to their taxpayers. Engage community and local politics through town hall style meetings. Though we have had some put on by the CAO, it would be nice if members of council were to put on a town hall and actively engage the citizens in a Q and A, as these are all of our issues. On February twenty eighth, twenty eighteen, from seven to nine P.M. at the Kirkland Lake Legion, all taxpayers and members of council are encouraged to attend to discuss how together we can work towards a better Kirkland Lake where all residents can afford to live, work, and play. So that's my greetings from the Taxpayers Association. We look forward to working with you. Any questions?
Counsel? Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Okay, the next speaker is Mr. Bernie Labine, Bernhardt and Morissette Taxation.
Thank you, Bernie Labine. My wife and I live at five zero four one Goodfish Road. Mayor Antonio Azzi and councilors, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you this evening regarding our current taxation modernization effort. I'd like to start by recognizing the diligent efforts put forth by previous presenters concerned with the impact council's taxation modernization will have on them as residents of Bernhardt-Morissette Township. Alex Thompson provided compelling evidence to refute Mr. F. Gustus's claim that the province downloaded significant cost to our community. Many statements made in his presentation simply don't appear to be accurate. Mike Gimo showed that the townships are paying above-average taxes at the current thirty-five percent of roll. Mike showed that the growth happening in our community is in the townships and several new build opportunities for our town are currently on hold. The new builds being put on hold have an impact on the local business who miss out on their opportunities to provide necessary supplies, labor, and professional input. Mike provided information identifying that our impact assessments in the, in the regions on average are increasing by forty percent over the next few years. on average are increasing by forty percent over the next few years. This alone will provide a significant increase in tax revenue without an increase in roll. As it stands, my taxes will increase from our current thirty-eight-hundred-plus to sixty-three-hundred-plus. Significant increases such as these surely must support the needs of the community. Albert Bro spoke of the impact spending decisions by council have had. He spoke of the maintenance and infrastructure spending, elephant in the room being the new community pool, a large contributing factor to the proposed tax increases. Mr. Agustus is proposing as much as eighteen percent taxation increase for all residents of Kirkland Lake to cover these costs. It should be of interest to every resident of Kirkland Lake, not just the townships. So what I'd like to speak to you about tonight is this. My wife Diana and I grew up in Kirkland Lake. After completing our post-secondary education, we had to leave in order to pursue our chosen fields. Over the next thirty years, we raised a family of six children in Southern Ontario. When I retired, we returned to Kirkland Lake, to an area that we always called home. We looked at several homes in the area. Our fist, our final decision came down to a house on Lake Canogamy and the one that we decided on, on Goodfish Road. We had many long discussions regarding the fact that the taxes in Goodfish were more than double that of Canogamy. We decided that we could, in fact, afford the home in Goodfish and the taxes, that it was within our budget. A contributing factor to our acceptance, our acceptance of the higher taxes was that the Goodfish house had fire service. We have since been informed the Kirkland Lake Fire Department only have pumper trucks and would have a difficult time fighting any fire at our house since we don't have a hydrant or accessible water. We had no idea at the time that the taxes in Bernhardt and Morissette townships could become a significant topic of debate and that in the end, our taxes could go from our current thirty-eight-hundred-and-sixty-four per year, which we had budgeted for, to as much as eleven thousand per year, not including the eighteen percent tax increase. Including the tax increase of eighteen percent takes you to a staggering thirteen thousand a year. These kinds of draconian tax increases are at a minimum onerous for many township residents and simply impossible for others. People may choose to leave the Kirkland Lake area where others simply will lose their homes. It is my opinion the council should not engage in discussions around the legality of these increases, but should be having a discussion around what is the right thing to do. Just because you think you can doesn't make it the right thing to do. I can tell you, had we known of the taxation issues that we are facing today, that there are even a possibility, we would have chosen the Canogamy home. This dynamic created here will no doubt influence young people, families that would be moving to the area, or retirees such as myself living on a fixed income, who might have decided to come back to the area. So in an effort to understand the taxation debate and possible paths forward, I took the time to contact several authorities involved in municipal affairs. IMPACT, Ontario Municipal Board, Elto, and the Almazman's Office. My discussions were largely around the legality of changing bylaw eighty-three eighty-three to support higher tax roll for residents of Bernhardt and Morissette and to investigate possible paths forward depending on the outcome. The result of this, council can vote to amend any bylaw they see fit to amend. The results of that amendment need to fall within the current law. I'll read you a statement sent to me from the Ontario Municipal Board in Elto with the context being around the nineteen-eighty-four OMB order. Goes as follows. Hi Bernie, thank you for your inquiry at the Ontario Municipal Board. As mentioned on the phone, the OMB expects that parties will respect and comply with the decision. If you feel that a decision is not being adhered to, you can request a certified copy of the decision, file it with the courts where it can be enforced as a certified court order. She then goes on to supply me with other information that I was looking for. I've included here, I'll give you a copy, Monica Patricio, the, from the Ontario Lands Tribunal, her, all her contact information, so you can contact her if you wish to verify any of the information I'm giving you here tonight. The end result is this, council can go ahead and amend eighty-three eighty-three as you see fit. However, the residents of Bernhardt and Morissette townships have some paths forward and they'll have to be pursued. We can go through the appropriate steps to, to enforce through the courts, the nineteen-eighty-four As per sections one-seventy-one through one-eighty-six of the Municipal Act, these are the sections that are noted in the email that was sent to me, we can take steps to de-annex or redraw our current geographical area to a town other than Kirkland Lake. The problem with all this is that the only people who will end up with money in their pockets are the lawyers. The cost of litigation alone for both sides will likely end up negating any increased revenue to the town and erode a good relationship which has existed for many years. I'm sure you're all aware, any positive conclusion for the people of Bernhardt and Morissette would result in a civil suit to recover the costs of the lawyers, creating another unnecessary source of tax burden. So what am I looking for today? I'm asking you all to embrace your leadership roles, make the right decision, make a decision for fair taxation. Be cautious of opinions put forward by staff who do not appear to have done their due diligence, thus creating an argument that didn't need to happen. And put an end to the taxation rule debate, which is causing endless amount of anxiety for the township residents. If you wish to increase taxes, you just need to follow the process outlined in the nineteen-eighty-four OMB order. So let's put this issue to rest here tonight, okay? So we can all move forward in dealing with the more significant issue, excuse me, our town is facing, issues such as the cost of infrastructure spending and the cost associated with current service levels. Thank you for your time.
Okay, item five, acceptance of minutes and recommendations.
I have a motion that's moved by Councilor Barker, seconded by Councilor Kylie, that council accepts the minutes of the following meetings. The special meeting of council held February sixth, two thousand and eighteen, the regular meeting of council held February sixth, two thousand and eighteen, and the meeting to open tenders for elevator modernization at the Joe Mavernak Community Complex that was held February eighth, two thousand and eighteen.
Any discussion? All in favor? It's carried. Okay, item six, reports of municipal officers and communications. C, Chief Administrative Officer, in response to Councilor Minow's rate and modernization policy. And along with Peter, if you want to do introduction.
Sure. With me today is the, the attorney for the municipality, Mr. Paul Cassan. He'll be doing a presentation embedded in my presentation, so to, for the benefit of the community, for benefit of council. So as at the last meeting, Councilor Minow asked for a legal opinion, which I'll let our attorney speak on that, when we get to it, and he asked for some fact-checking from some of the presentations that were made. So I, I'll start off with some of the fact-checking. Some of the historical records on the BMM file, the original night, the, the, the whole marriage started off in nineteen-seventy-five. I do have a copy of these documents, they will be posted online for anybody to, to, to see the historical files. So the, the original, the original bylaw, basically the town, actually I do have this one here, I think, I could pop it up. Yeah. You read under, upside down? So this is the nineteen-seventy-five one, obviously it took through the process with the appeals and whatnot, it ended up in the nineteen-eighty-three OMB order. But what I'd like to highlight here is that Kirkland Lake was, was worried about township, the budding township of Bernhardt, right here. The Ministry of Transportation had sent a letter to the municipality in seventy-five, recommended that the municipality enact legislation to the zoning control over the airport. So the airport is, excuse me, the airport is in Morissette. So it seems to be that, just reading from this, that when the town had an interest in Bernhardt, the, the ministry was also looking to look at having zone, giving the town zoning control over the airport. So this, this file will be available on the website for everybody's to, to have. Nineteen-eighty-four, we have the OMB order, that, the famous order. In nineteen-ninety, we have a, the CAO of the day, Lionel Sharrett, questions the tax revenue and asked for internal analysis. There is a document that we'll post on the website. In ninety-five, the CAO of the day, Gary Shea, asks for a review of the calculations as he suspects things have changed in the eleven years of the order. That document will also be posted online. In nineteen-ninety-eight, the town's then attorney, Murray Ellis, gives an opinion about the downloading and transferring of costs that they create in equity. That document will also be posted online. And in twenty-sixteen, the, this council had commissioned KPMG to do a study. Part of that study was, I guess they looked at how they can fund infrastructure deficit. KPMG had suggested that they increase taxation revenue by, I guess they estimated some six-hundred-thousand dollars annually, resulting from the full assessment of the rural properties in that area, and that's on page twenty-nine, and that document's, and it's already on our website, the KPMG report. So just to update why we're here currently, in twenty-seventeen, this council moved, voted to remove wastewater from property taxes. So properties who receive sewer services had a neutral increase with the wastewater now appearing on as a direct bill, and those who don't get a direct bill, obviously we see a net decrease. And also in May, during the budget process, process, council mistakenly voted to increase the Bernhardt Morissette taxes from thirty-five to forty percent as part of, as part of the budget. This was without following the proper legal process. Of course, I arrived in July, August, one of the first things that I was, came across my desk, caught was the, this, this thirty-five to forty percent. So in order to respect the OMB, the original nineteen-eighty-three OMB, I had done a report back in October, seeking council to reverse this to, so that, so it, so we would respect the OMB order and have, have the existing order in place. At the same time, I've identified some internal equities, inequities in tax rates and services across the municipality for not just the townships of Bernhardt and Morissette, but the residents of Harvey Kirkland Drive and Goodfish Road on the Tech Township side. And I asked for council direction to hold a public meeting. Did have a public meeting in November with lots of people, provided feedback. One of the notables, Mr. Coghlan eloquently spoke at the meeting and basically said that no one in the room is a tax expert and suggested hiring a consultant who's a specialist. Council and I received twenty-two letters, ten of them advocating for a third party to be brought in to review this as well. In January, I tabled a report that recommended council hear from the residents and delegates and then make a decision on the sixth of February. Council unanimously approved a motion to allow delegates to basically extend the decision. However, the decision date remains outstanding. And then the last meeting, council directed me to do a fact, fact-checking and seek a legal opinion. So that's where we are today, that's the current status. So some of the fact-checking that I did, items that have changed since nineteen-eighty-four, I'm not going to go down through the whole list because the document is available, it's kind of repetitive information as well. The big takeaways here is that the math that was used in eighty-four to calculate the, the numbers, that math does not exist anymore because both the assessment scheme and the property tax formula has changed in Ontario. So these are the, the rules of what's changed. So that, that definitely has changed. So even if we take the eighty-four calculations, we can't even try to fit them in into a nineteen, two thousand and eighteen calculation because everything has changed. Questions about downloading? Again, what I'd suggest, I, I documented some of the stuff here, but what, one of the things I do down, on my presentation is if people are free to do an internet search on Ontario municipal downloading and they can go on to see all the, the various articles and academic papers and policy statements. Just to highlight some stuff here, the feds get out of the social housing in ninety-three, the change, they, the feds changed the airport grant funding. So the, obviously the Transport Canada increased regulations on airports post-nine-eleven significantly. And the cost share, cost sharing and growth of policing costs that local governments have to pay and contribute to under, which is under federal government control, have downloaded onto local governments. I do offer some current examples that are impacting today's budget in twenty-eighteen. Provincial government downloads or changes, the nineteen-ninety-eight local service realignment policy, which removed the school board taxing powers and replaced it with a slew of service, other service to be funded by municipalities. This increased the net cost to municipalities, and there's documents on the ministry's website. In two thousand and eight, after ten years of that, the provincial government decided to do a provincial municipal fiscal service delivery review. Some costs were uploaded from nineteen-ninety-eight. That took ten years to implement, so it started in oh-eight and two thousand and eighteen. And again, as I mentioned earlier, people are allowed to do on Ontario municipal downloading to find out all the articles that exist on this. This comes from an academic paper from the Monks School at the University of Toronto. This is the, what happened after local service realignment. The changes from what was previously provincial, what became municipal. This came from the ministry's website of what was uploaded from the, from the local services realignment. So not everything got uploaded, some stuff did. I have some examples here of what's impacting our downloading pressure. So come this July first, the province has basically got out of the business of enforcing rental unit property maintenance standards. That is a municipal responsibility and that is a twenty-eighteen budget impact, which I will be seeking council's funding for. The other example that happened recently is the account, the province regulated that we must now have an asset management planning, plan. It's a four-year phase-in scenario. First phase starts January one, twenty-nineteen. Again, that is a budget expansion I will be seeking as part of the twenty-eighteen budget. That's a new additional downloaded cost. We have accessibility regulations for municipality, that will show up as a twenty-eighteen budget impact. There is obviously a new growth plan for Northern Ontario, which has significant costs for source water protection, environmental regulations, land planning, OMB appeals, which is another nine, two thousand and eighteen budget impact. These did not exist back in the eighties. And a, as of next year, the Municipal Act changes for the powers of the Ombudsman and Integrity Commissioner changes again, which burdens the municipalities to fund part of those services. One of the things that we were looking at during the public, this, this document, this particular one was presented at the November Town Hall regarding the lakes and the roads, sorry, the, the roadways and, and the upgrades required. This is just going through the history of our, the town subdivision agreements of what they had gotten during the, the last thirty years for approving the subdivisions. This isn't new, this was presented at the, the public forum in November. It's part of our official plan stuff. So this is also the same thing that was in November, just tells you what's the municipal costs and what is the local residents' costs. and what is the local residents' costs. The question was about what roads will be needed to brought up to municipal standards. Part of Bernhardt-Drive Wood, Nettie Lake Road, Pine Tree Road, Deloyal Crescent, Sandy Drive. The public right-of-ways and the roads that go up to Dorothy, Joyce or Lawgrave Lakes are not municipal-owned. They're actually not public, they're not municipal-owned road and they're not public roads. So the municipality does not have to upgrade any of those unless they choose to buy them. To change the invoicing out from the residents, the town would need to make amendments to the official plan to take over and upgrade these roads as part of that process. One of the issues when you up some of these roads, I can't remember, perhaps it's Sandy Drive. One of these roads is, all the residents are assessed at seasonal access because the road is seasonal. So the moment you become a municipal road, it will become year-round. And so those residents will remove the discount that M P A C gives for seasonal access roadways. Again, this is from the report in nineteen, in November. This is what's changed from the neighborhoods, kind of repetitive. This is obviously something different that happened. This is how M P A C makes assessments. Here's a map of Bernhardt-Morissette, the ones in red are seasonally assessed properties. We had a question about all the building activity. Well, according to our records, for Tech Township for twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen, there was eighty-two permits issued on the residential side and for the same timeframe, there was four permits issued, according to our records. And I will turn it over to Paul to answer our, the legal questions.
So just, Peter, just so I understand, everything, you went through it fairly quickly, but everything's online?
Everything's online. And now most of it's repetitive? Most of it is repetitive because it was, it's actually, a lot of it's from the public meeting in November.
Thank you very much, your worship. My name is Paul Cassan, I'm a lawyer at Wishart Law Firm. I've been practicing municipal law for twenty years this year. And I brought to council a report to sort of give you the legal process for whether and how you can change bylaw eighty-three dash eighty-three and particularly in light of the Ontario Municipal Board Order, which our previous speaker spoke about as being enforceable, I certainly agree with that. So certainly if council has any questions during the presentation, I'm happy to take them. And so the first question, and I think the most important question on our minds is, can council adjust taxation in Bernhardt and Morissette townships? And I suppose I should add to that legally. And the answer to that is yes, you can adjust the taxation in Bernhardt and Morissette townships. But I need you to understand the process because there is a process involved. It's not a simple process, but it's definitely doable if it's something that council wishes to do. So first, I want to talk about what council is. Because it's important that we understand what this body is. So it's not a management board, but council is a level of government. And council speaks as a whole, out of council chambers. Section two twenty-four outlines council's roles and responsibilities, but one of the primary responsibilities is to maintain the financial wellbeing of the municipality and set policy and service level delivery for the municipality. So in other words, council decides what services are going to be provided in the municipality and of course then how they're going to get funded. Unlike other levels of government, the provincial or the federal government, the municipality's power is entirely dependent on statute. So anything that council wishes to do, they must find an authority in statute for that action. It's important that we understand that when we're looking at the taxation in what I'll call just the townships. So bylaw eighty-three dash eighty-three sets out an urban service area and sets the level of taxation pursuant to the Ontario Municipal Board Order in Bernhardt and Morissette townships at thirty-five percent of the capital costs of the municipality. This bylaw is approved by an order of the Ontario Municipal Board. So while your first, while your earlier presenter said that the municipality can amend any of its bylaws, in this case, that's not entirely true. The council doesn't have the authority to amend bylaw eighty-three dash eighty-three without first obtaining consent from the Ontario Municipal Board. Now, back in nineteen eighty-three, under the Mike Harris government, this is when the idea of annexation of townships was certainly in fad. And the structure of the municipal act back then was that the Ontario Municipal Board was responsible for overseeing urban service areas and the level of taxation in those areas. That's no longer the case. The municipal act changed substantially in two thousand and one, to the point that it's now called the Municipal Act two thousand and one. And the Ontario Municipal Board was removed from the business of setting up urban service areas and looking at setting and enforcing taxation levels. That's not to say that the Ontario Municipal Board Order is no longer in effect. It is still in effect and it is still binding on the municipality as the earlier speaker indicated. However, section three seventy-point-one of the Municipal Act two thousand and one speaks to this issue with respect to urban service areas. The point being, urban service areas are no longer created and they're no longer generally administered or overseen by the Ontario Municipal Board. Three seventy-point-one subsection one allows the municipal board to exercise its historic jurisdiction over urban service areas that existed before December thirty-first of two thousand and two. So where, like in Kirkland Lake, we have an urban service area that was overseen by the municipal board, the municipal board has permissive authority to deal with the same jurisdiction that it had pre-two thousand and one. That being said, we've already written to the Ontario Municipal Board and they say that the authority that they're exercising, they'll only take jurisdiction if we can show that there is an error in fact or law. Another way to say that is, the municipal board is not going to change the thirty-five percent order that it made in nineteen eighty-four. And the reason for that is that there are other methods to deal with that. Essentially, the power has been transferred from the Ontario Municipal Board to set up what we're called the urban service areas to municipal councils. So the Ontario Municipal Board is not going to help us change bylaw eighty-three dash eighty-three or its order. However, it can be dealt with by council. Three seventy-point-one subsection two gives council the authority to abolish bylaw eighty-three dash eighty-three and the Ontario Municipal Board Order. What I mean by that is, council can decide, we're going to get rid of that order. And if they do that, they're within their authority. It's a binary system though, it's on or off. So you can't change the taxation percentage. You can either say, we're going to leave it as it is, or we're going to abolish it. And the second you abolish it, it would result in the residents of the townships paying exactly the same tax rate as everywhere else in the municipality. Essentially, the difference would be gone. That's not the end of the story. Can you adjust taxes for the townships? The old urban service area concept overseen by the Ontario Municipal Board has now been updated and council can set special service areas within the municipality. You see this happen a lot in Southern Ontario where a number of small municipalities amalgamate into a larger municipality. And the smaller municipalities are maintaining the infrastructure that they had when they were a small municipality. So if you look at Chatham, for instance, I understand they have about seventeen different urban special service areas because the small municipalities had their own library, had their own water treatment plant. And so they're continuing to fund that infrastructure and so they have different tax rates throughout the municipality. So essentially, if council wants to adjust the taxes for the township, they could set up a special service area. And what they need to do, or the way that it works is kind of the opposite of the way the Ontario Municipal Board Order worked. What the municipal board did is they looked at the situation. Frankly, I think that they looked at the fact that the townships don't have water and sewer and they said, we're going to give them a discount. So the urban, the special service areas within a municipality work differently. Essentially, council would set the base rate for taxation for all residents of municipality. And the residential rate would be set at X dollars or X percent. And then they would study the municipality and look for geographic areas that can be delineated within the municipality that have extra services. Water and sewer now being a user-pay system, that's not going to be a service. So the council would have to look at the municipal services that are delivered to the ratepayers and try to determine if there are municipal services that are not provided to all of the residents of the municipality. So instead of doing it the way the municipal board did by saying, we're going to give you a discount off of a hundred percent of the taxes, you would set a tax rate and then you would levy special area rates for the services that the geographic areas do get. So for instance, if you were prohibiting people from the townships from coming to the library, you could say that the people who are permitted to go to the library pay for the library service. You figure out how much that is and you put a special area rate on the area that's permitted to go to the library. So instead of a discount, you're actually adding fees to the areas that get the service. So in essence, instead of reducing the taxes that are paid by the residents of the townships, it would layer on special service rates in the areas where those services are provided. I was asked if the council could negotiate rates with the townships. Unfortunately, the answer to this is no. Council has the authority to set tax rates. And the legislation under the Municipal Act and the Assessment Act are set up to treat all taxpayers equally and fairly based on their property assessment and tax classifications, meaning residential, commercial, industrial, agricultural, that sort of thing. So subject to the special services rates laid out in the Municipal Act, council can't arbitrarily set taxation rates that are different for specific areas or taxpayers. And so if you embark on an exercise of looking at special services rates, the reality is that it may be not only the residents of Bernhardt and Morissette townships that don't get all of the services. It may be other areas within the municipality that also don't get the services. So there may be other areas that are affected by this. This is very important for council to understand and for the ratepayers to understand. Because council has the authority to abolish eighty-three dash eighty-three. Council has the authority to set the special area rates. The Assessment Act, and we all know that assessments throughout Northern Ontario have increased substantially in the last four-year cycle. And the Assessment Act provides for a phase-in process where the increase is phased in to your taxes over a four-year period. That's for a change in assessment. What we're talking about here is not an assessment change, it's a change of the taxation structure in the municipality. And so the impact would be felt immediately. So in other words, if you abolish eighty-three dash eighty-three, that takes effect immediately. If you put the special area rates in, that takes effect immediately. Council doesn't have the authority to phase in those changes under the act. Other things to consider are that the current tax policy pursuant to bylaw eighty-three dash eighty-three actually encourages development in the townships instead of in the urban service area. This may be contrary to your official plan. It's not consistent with the provincial policy statement and the provincial growth plan, which are trying to encourage intensification of development within municipalities and within town sites to avoid having to pay for infrastructure going out into rural areas. Any bylaw that council passes has to be consistent with your official plan and has to be consistent with the provincial policy statement and to an extent, the growth plan. So it's important to keep those in mind if council decides they're going to do some of these special service rates. And the reason for that is that any municipal bylaw can be challenged by bringing an application to quash the bylaw in the Superior Court. That challenge has to be brought within one year of passing the bylaw. And I'm not talking specifically about taxation rules, I'm talking about any bylaw that's passed by council. So challenges can be brought on the basis of irregularities in procedure. If the municipal act or the Planning Act indicate you have to have a public hearing and you didn't do that, that's one reason that a bylaw could be quashed. Repeating the words of the statute mean you don't make a decision, you just put the language out of the Planning Act or the municipal act in your bylaw, bylaws have been defeated on that basis. They can be defeated because they violate the Charter of Rights and Freedoms. So if you impose a decision that affects people based on religion, as an example, which is a prohibited ground of discrimination, that would be a violation of the Charter of Rights and Freedoms and the bylaw would fail in that respect. Paragraphs D and E, I think, are most relevant here. Lack of statutory authority. So as Peter's presentation showed you, last year, council decided to increase the taxation from thirty-five to forty percent. There isn't a statutory authority for you to do that. So Peter caught that and had that reversed. If it wasn't Peter, if it was a ratepayer who brought an application to Superior Court, they would challenge that decision on the basis that there's no statute that gives you the authority to do that. Also would be an improper purpose. If you say, okay, we don't like thirty-five percent, but we're going to go to sixty percent. Again, no statutory authority, but it's an improper purpose because under the act, you can deal with special taxes by dealing with special service rates and special service areas. But apart from doing it that way, it would be seen as an improper purpose. Bad faith bylaws are more if you target a bylaw against a specific individual, not really relevant. Vagueness is if you read the bylaw and you can't understand what it means. A stop or unfair operation is usually something that happens when the bylaw is put in place, you intend the bylaw to do a particular thing and it ends up affecting people a different way and it's unfair, there's an estoppel. So those are the bases that any bylaw could be challenged with. And I want you to understand that because if you didn't follow the statutory procedure to adjust the taxes, the bylaw would be open to attack. And then you'd end up paying to defend it and paying the consequences of having it rescinded. That's why it's really important to understand both the process for abolishing eighty-three dash eighty-three and also for adjusting taxes by setting up a system. You want those two things to go hand in hand. And you want the system, if you want to design one, to be done properly because one of the, one of the worst-case scenarios, I think, would be that council designs a system that gives a benefit to the townships, only to find that that goes away, but the revoking of bylaw eighty-three dash eighty-three stands. That would be the end of the tax benefit that the townships receive. That would be the end of the tax benefit that the munis, that the townships receive. I was asked if the townships could de-annex. And there is a process in the Municipal Act for dissolution, it's called. The process would require municipal council to decide that they want to get rid of the townships. And the municipal council would have to apply to the Ontario Municipal Board for an order permitting them to de-annex the townships. Or alternatively, apply to the minister who then has to get approval from the governor and council. In other words, they have to go to the legislature and get a, a special bill saying that... Sorry. The, the second process would be that the municipal council would apply to the Minister of Municipal Affairs. The municipal of munis, Minister of Municipal Affairs would have to get approval from the governor and council. In other words, they would have to go to the legislature to get a bill allowing the townships to de-annex. In the day of downloading, it's unlikely, I believe, that the province would allow the townships to be effectively uploaded back to the province because they would then fall into the PLT scheme, the Provincial Land Tax Scheme, and they would become the provincial responsibility which the province is trying to download to municipalities. So it's possible legally, I think it's unlikely to succeed. If council is interested in looking at the special service rates, my advice would be to engage some consultants and get some studies done. Look at what municipal services are not provided to various areas of the municipality. Look at what financial impact that would have on their tax bill and the, and the tax base. You could do this in a number of steps. You can do it from a high level first. And I've, I've suggested a company called E4M, which is a not-for-profit corporation that does work for municipalities. They would do it on a cost-recovery basis. I've also worked with a group for a lot of municipalities called Municipal Tax Advisory Group. They worked for, for me on the power dam assessment appeals for Wawa and Sault Ste. Marie. And they have very in-depth expertise in designing tax structures and, and setting tax rates. I think that would be a second study or analysis after council decides that they do or don't want to go ahead with this. So, so council certainly has the options of revoking eighty-three dash eighty-three and doing nothing else, which would have the effect of making the townships taxed at the same rate as everybody else in the municipality, which would end the effective subsidization by the taxpayers that are paying a hundred percent of the tax rate. They could, they could set the specialized tax rates. Or you could do nothing and just leave the status quo. I think those are the options.
Counselor Morgan.
When we spoke earlier, the higher-ranked consultant in doing the calculation, because it's coming at it from the opposite spectrum from where they did it before, you indicated that the likely outcome would be very close to what Mr. Augustus had calculated back in November, I believe. Can you just comment on that?
Okay, so when you set the special service rate, the, the additional rate that you charge has to be the cost for the service that's not provided universally throughout the municipality. So for instance, say, let's, let's use garbage pickup as an example. Say that you were going to set garbage pickup to be within the town only and that you were, you were not going to provide it anywhere else. So that would be a good example of a, a special service rate that you could, you could set. So my point was that I think that the services that the municipality offers, there's, there's not going to be a high value to the services that are restricted to areas such as within the town site. So for instance, all of your administration costs and salaries and all of your personnel, that, that, you couldn't restrict that to a specific area. You can't restrict the, this facility, the cost of this facility, the library, because everybody's got access to it. So when you set the special service rates, you have to very clearly delineate the geographic area that is served by that special service in order to effectively increase the rate for the people that are getting those services. I obviously haven't done the study, but I, I don't think that it would be a high number. In other words, I think that the, the number of services that the township residents do not get would not be a high number. I think, so, so I think that, that the danger, if you will, here is that you would be going from thirty-five percent to something much higher. I would expect it to be in the nineties.
Counselor Roman.
My, my question with regards to the special service areas and, and what you presented, my understanding is, is this is something that council could choose to do in-house without, without engaging a consultant?
Yes.
But at the same time, by engaging a consultant, we're less likely to have the outcome challenged. Is, is that correct?
Mostly. There, it's, it's absolutely not required by the Municipal Act or the regulations that you get an outside expert to do the study. That's not a requirement. You could do it in-house. The advantage, and it's not less likely to be challenged. Frankly, I think, I think the chances of, of a challenge if you set up a special service rate are probably fairly high. Because the, all of the ratepayers who are not subject to the thirty-five percent order are paying a hundred percent. And so if you, if the study comes out and says that, that, that they're strongly subsidizing the rural areas, the townships, then the, the taxpayers in town are liable to challenge it. If, if it goes the other way, then the township residents are liable to challenge it. My point is, if you do it properly, transparently, using expert evidence, you'd be much likely to successfully withstand a challenge. I, I, I think the chances of this being challenged are probably fairly high.
And at the same time now, if, if the thing is challenged and, and successfully challenged?
Yes.
The, the special service area disappears, but also the fact that the original bylaw had to be revoked. It, it, a suc, does a successful challenge mean you go to a hundred percent?
The, the danger of a successful challenge is probably that you would end up at a hundred percent. Because the revoking or the abolishing of the urban service area and getting rid of eighty-three dash eighty-three is something that council's permitted to do under the Municipal Act, specifically under three seventy point one. You can do it without the consent of the Municipal Board and even without having a public hearing. That's what the Act says. So the chances of, of somebody challenging that successfully are not high. You then set up the special service area. And if you didn't do that properly, then the challenge would be to the special service area scheme. And if that was successful, then the special service area scheme would fall off the table. And you'd be left at a hundred percent.
Thank you.
Counselor Kylie.
Yeah, Paul, we spoke earlier today and one of the things that you mentioned about eighty-three dash eighty-three and repealing that in advance without having setting up the special service rate areas is not recommended. We shouldn't repeal eighty-three eighty-three until we have come up with the, the reasoning and justification for the special rate, service rates. So if we chose to, to go this route with a special area, in the meantime, eighty-three eighty-three stays in effect. It stays at thirty-five percent until such time council votes to revoke it or repeal it. And, and I think one of, some of the feedback that we gave you today was our concern is not knowing how the decision was arrived by the Ontario Municipal Board as to the, the calculations and, and the, the thought process behind it. And, and I think that's, that's really important to, to all of us because it's only half the story and we don't know that half. And we, what we suggested was get, trying to get a copy of that special taxation report. And it seems odd that the town doesn't have it and OMB didn't exactly say, here, pick it up. So I, I think we need to go through that process of getting a copy of that expert tax report to, to fully understand both sides of the story, how they arrived at this thirty-five percent and how that compares to today, what services we deliver. So that's what, how I feel that, how we should proceed. If, yes, it will delay things, but I don't think we can make any decisions without having that full knowledge of that.
So just so that I understand your question, I, I think you're asking me if you should delay the decision. I think you've asked me a few questions. One is if you should delay the decision pending getting the calculations of the nineteen eighty-three eighty-four analysis. I don't think you'll ever see that report. And the reason that I don't think you'll ever see it is that it's almost thirty years old.
Thirty-five.
Yeah. Almost thirty-five years old. The document retention concept was not as strong as it is nowadays. It's not unusual to me that a municipality does not have those documents from nineteen eighty-three. Representing lots of municipalities throughout Northern Ontario, I know that sometimes documents are stored in a basement and they get moldy and they get thrown out. So I'm not sure you'll ever find that. I also don't think that it helps you a lot. And the reason I don't think it helps you a lot is that it was probably negotiated between the parties back then. It was probably something that was done by the Ontario Municipal Board based on guidelines or a system that they had. It was definitely done on a system where water and sewer was part of the taxation process. And that would have been a large cost back then of a much smaller pie because the value of services that were offered by the municipality back then are totally different than are offered now. So I, I think it would be interesting if you do find it. I, I'm not saying don't read it, I'm not suggesting it's irrelevant. I just don't think that it helps you a lot going forward. Because going forward, if you're going to change the, the, the system, and you don't have to change the system, to be clear. If you're going to change the system though, you have to do it in accordance with the current Municipal Act whenever you change it. And right now, the Act says that you have to look at, if you're going to have different rates throughout your municipality, you have to set up these special service areas. So regardless of how it was done back in nineteen eighty-three, that won't change how you have to do it now if you're going to set up a special system. But again, you don't have to change anything now. You also asked me about my advice if you repeal eighty-three dash eighty-three and you should have a system in place. That's a bit of a political question. And, and, and my job is to provide you with legal advice. There's nothing legally that requires you to have a special system in place to repeal eighty-three dash eighty-three. And if council today, or in an appropriately-called meeting where it's on the agenda, decided to do that, there's no other legal requirements. You can, you can do that. And then, and then it's gone. So whether it's this council or the next council or ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road, assuming the Municipal Act doesn't change, which is a terrible assumption. But if it stayed the same it is right now, council can, can make that decision.
I, I still think having that report, it gives us an idea what methodology they're using. And it does help to understand how, how they arrived at that. And secondly, from what you've told us tonight, there isn't really a heck of a lot of choices here. It's either thirty-five percent or a hundred, because there's no in-between based on other than setting up these, these special service boards, but...
That's exactly correct.
And, and that's the difficult part.
Yeah.
Because there's a human touch to this, as Bernie mentioned tonight, and we all feel that.
Yeah.
These people have always paid their taxes, they've been good citizens. And it, it's very difficult for them. I can understand what they're saying. And I don't live there, but I feel for them. So I'm, I'm not anxious to make a decision tonight. I, I do think we, we, we should pursue getting the copy of that report and, and moving further down the line. It's not going to affect the two thousand and seventeen taxes from what I see, or eighteen, I'm sorry, at this process. And it's almost getting into that period where there's five or six months left. It's lame duck season really for council. They're making decisions for the next council and, and that's probably not fair to anybody.
And frankly, setting up the special service area system and doing it right is not a quick process. That's, that's something where you've got to look at all of your services. You've got to look at your geography, you've got to look at your official plan, you've got to look at the provincial policy statement and make sure that you're going to comply with everything. Because if it doesn't, it's open to a, a, a successful attack. And so my advice certainly is, if council wants there to continue to be a different tax rate in the townships, then have your special service area well planned out and studied before you abolish eighty-three dash eighty-three. Otherwise, there's going to be a significant impact on the tax bills in the townships and no relief until you get that system put in place.
We could be talking a couple of years, I think.
I think you're talking a year for sure. I think that's a reasonable target to study it properly and set it up.
Counselor Shamirard.
Hi, Paul. I don't know if I have a question for you, but I got lots of comments. When KPMG was here, they made me look at taxes a different way. We look mostly at the tax rate.
Yeah.
But I can't remember his name, but he was really good. He said, look, Austria, exactly. He said, look at the house, you should pay tax on your house, not on the value of your house. So meaning that a house in Kirkland Lake, if you bring it down to Sudbury, your taxes would be higher than Kirkland Lake. So at the end of the day, what he was telling him, not me, he was telling us your taxes in Kirkland Lake are pretty reasonable, even low compared to other, other places. It was not me, it was him. So starting with that, you guys will like the end though. So starting with the same idea, what's happening in, in town is that my house is calculated compared to a house around me. So my value is whatever it is compared to the house around me. So if I take my house and move it, which is, we'll, we'll say any house, three hundred thousand, if I move it to the lake, now it might be worth five, six hundred thousand.
Yeah.
So they already pay taxes really higher than we do in town compared to us. Because they pay, they pay, their rate is twenty-five percent, but on six hundred thousand, not on three hundred thousand. So if you try to double the tax and bring it to a hundred percent now, it goes like really out of whack. Some of, some of the houses there, I was looking around and they're like one point two million, eight hundred thousand. But I know the house at eight hundred thousand, if we move it in town, would be about three fifty. So that tax should be calculated on three fifty, not eight hundred thousand. But that's Impact's problem, not ours. That's a problem. Like we all, all, we only talk about tax rate, but Impact decides what the rate. So from what I talked to Impact, they said to me that their houses there are calculated compared to Sudbury on the lake or maybe the Muskoka on the lake. Not, not compared to what we have in town. So the value of their house, like Mr. Levine said, and he was, excellent presentation Bernie, was right, is that their, the value of their house is too high. So if they have a house at eight hundred thousand, I know they won't sell that house for eight hundred thousand. And we see it in conogamy, where a house of value at nine hundred thousand, they sold it for six hundred thousand. So they pay too much tax already, technically. But with a twenty-five percent, and like, like Bernie said, he was... But with a 35%, and like Bernie said, he was actually right, it has to be fair. And I think it's pretty fair right now. If you tell me we could go to 45%, I would probably agree. But you told me it's 35 or 100? Well, there's no choice here. There's only one choice. It's 35. There's no 100. This is ridiculous. No, 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 no.
So your question about assessment. The assessed value of a property under the Assessment Act is supposed to be the current value assessment, meaning what the property would transact for. If your property is not assessed for what you could sell it for, you should look at that. If the municipality has a large area or large taxpayers where the assessment is wrong, it would be a really good idea to get MPAC in here. And I know they'll come to council. And you should bring that to their attention because it doesn't benefit the municipality to have artificially inflated taxes. I do a lot of tax assessment work for municipalities and against municipalities. And I can tell you that if there are large problems and the municipality asks MPAC to come and look at them, they will do that. And if that's a problem in this area, that's also something that should be looked at when you're looking at fixing the tax issue.
So what happened, Paul, just to let you... So I've been here eight years. That's before me. So about 10 years ago, they went after MPACs, and Todd was there and Tony. And they said, "MPAC want to come here? You have come here, the house are too low. They were really too low, the evaluation." And they're still in town. House for $150,000 might sell for $175,000. And it still happens regularly. Not as much right now, because right now the mine went down a bit. But now they've got to start building the shaft, so the price of houses will go back up again. So the evaluation of their house will be lower again than what they will sell for, contrary to people on Goodfish Lake, where the house is valued more than what they will sell for. So you have also to take this in consideration. And I know you're a lawyer and it's black and white. And that's what your job is. But there's more than black and white here. There's also other things that come into play.
You're right. And actually, one of the things that I suggested council look at was the assessments of the area. Because if they're wrong, then the tax... Then if they're wrong, all you know is that the taxes that the residents are paying are wrong. You don't know if they're too high or too low. But you need to have the assessment correct because that's the baseline that all properties in Ontario, whether your residential, commercial, industrial, or whatever, are supposed to be assessed on. So that needs to be right. And MPAC needs to get that job right for you. And I know some phone numbers if you want to call them.
Oh, well, I mean, Tony could talk about MPAC for a long time because he's been fighting with them for 10 years, like I said. Like, I don't know what the answer is, really. There's no answer because there was a house for sale last week. I don't know if I should say that. But it was assessed so low that they couldn't get a loan. But then MPAC went around and didn't go out the house. They go out the car. He just drove around and said, "Okay, that's what it's worth." And he was wrong. I mean, it was supposed to be about twice the value. But then when he tried to get a loan, when the value was too low, he can't get a loan. So there was, again, a house that was evaluated about $200,000 sold for over $400,000. So this happens in town.
And if they're using the Muskokas as a comparator, that's...
Well, that's because lake, there's no lake around here, really. Sudbury has a house on the lake. And there might be some in Cabot. And here, there's not enough houses. What'd you say, Peter, 58 houses, something on the lake? About that, anyway. Yeah. So they have to compare to something else. And that's a big problem.
They have to get the assessed value correct.
Yeah. And for sure, it's not correct. Thank you, Paul.
Counselor Morgan.
Yes, thanks. And thanks for all the input. Just a couple of comments. I'm just following sort of what Jean-Guy's approach is. First of all, just as a point of clarity, the 5% increase that was snuck into the budget last year was not approved by council. It was buried in the fine print and council was not aware of it. So I just want to be absolutely clear on that. Certainly, it was not, I didn't see it. And I don't think anybody else saw it. So that's one issue. When we embarked on this process to modernize the tax rate in Bernhard and Morissette, the whole point was to compensate for the uploading and downloading and the removal of the sewage component from the tax bill. And I don't think there's anybody here that would disagree that that was a fair thing to consider. The problem we're faced with today is that there's only certain ways that we can go about this process. As much as we've all conjectured as to how we would like to approach this, I mean, initially, I thought that we would be able to pull the notes out from 1983, plug in the new numbers, and arrive at a new number, and everybody would be happy with that. The reality is, we don't have that. We couldn't do it anyways. So it's a pointless exercise. The reality today is we're faced with basically two and a half options. One option is to leave it where it is. The other option is to rescind it and go to 100%. And the third, or, you know, half an option, is to hire a consultant and come up with a number that's going to be like in the 90s, which I don't want any part of. I mean, the reality is, is that there's absolutely no way that we would have seen the development in Bernhard and Morissette if the tax rate was 100%. Those homes would have been built at Canagami or Crystal or wherever. The only reason, the only reason they were built out there, and most of the building has happened since that, you know, since that point in time when they were annexed. I mean, yes, there were some that were annexed. But the reality is, is that the bulk of them were built subsequent to that. And I quite like the idea of having a reduced tax rate. We've talked about it, actually, in different parts of the municipality to stimulate economic development. We have this opportunity. We already have it in place. I'm not thrilled that it's going to stay at 35 forever. And I suspect that at some point in time, you know, somebody's going to pay the consultant to come up with that number. But right now, faced with those choices, the only answer for me is to leave it at 35%. So...
Counselor Kylie.
I've just got to comment on Jean-Guy was mentioning, he thought they were using Muskoka assessment values for us. My understanding, it was more like Canagami sells substantially higher than the Goodfish area. Not that it's any nicer. But they have gotten upwards to $600,000, $700,000 for houses. I have to agree with Jean-Guy. There is no way you're going to get $600,000 or $700,000 in Bernhard Morissette. You'll be a long wait. And the assessment issue is definitely an issue. I know we don't have any control over it. But if we want all the people out in Bernhard and Morissette to appeal their taxes, well, guess what? Your taxes, the rest of you people in town, you'll be paying to make up for it. Thank you.
Just a point of clarification regarding the 35 to 40 during last year's budget. There was a bylaw that was passed.
I'm well aware that there was a budget passed. But it was a budget passed with those numbers buried somewhere deep in the fine print. Council was not aware that we were raising the tax rate in Bernhard Morissette by 5%. That was not brought to anybody's attention.
Counselor Barker.
This definitely hasn't been an easy process. But I appreciate, Peter, you taking the bull by the horns and looking at it in a transparent manner, providing ample opportunity for both sides of the parties to present their cases and looking at it from a transparent manner and a legal manner and an appropriate manner. It's given quite a clarity. And I think we all know where we stand now, given today, given the legislation and how we proceed from here. You've taken a lot of flak. I don't think you deserved a lot of the flak. I think you were doing as you were told to do. And I appreciate everything you've done. And the transparency and the openness that you bring to the community in processes now. I don't think we've had this much in community engagement in any, well, in my past eight years on council. It's been a challenge to get people's opinions on a lot of things. And I think we're seeing that people do care in the community. And I'm very thankful that you have brought forward your insight into this matter. And I hope that this continues for other matters that come down the pipes because we, as council, need to know your insight in order to make informed decisions. And I appreciate that. And thank you, Paul, for your legal advice. This is way beyond my scope of knowledge. And I appreciate you coming in and presenting the legalities of the matter. So thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Morgan.
Yeah, actually, you brought up a really good point, Tom. And I want to second that with the new C A O. You know, there was a lot of comments out there that I really resented and I pushed back against them. There's, Peter had absolutely no agenda in dealing with this. This was entirely from his background with knowledge in the policymaking and the municipal regulatory environment. There was absolutely no way that he could have an agenda to try and stick it to anybody. And to make those comments out in the public was entirely unfair. And I think there's a few people that want an apology. But thank you for that.
Counselor Shamirard.
You went over me again. Okay, Tony, we talk a lot, but we have to give a decision. Doesn't have to be tonight, but it should not be in August either. It should be either this week or in two weeks. We seem to be having sort of the same ideas around council. So we could do it tonight. Or you could wait in two weeks and bring it there. Not tonight, okay. So in two weeks, we could promise them there'll be a decision made.
You know, tonight is the lesson.
Yeah.
And we continue to listen. You know, I sit with everybody else here. There's not a person at this table that really wanted to bring up Bernhard Morissette and the tax rate difference. But back in 2015, we commissioned KPMG. I think we paid $80,000 for that summary report from them. We wanted to look at our community from outside eyes. We've ticked all the boxes on the KPMG report. The next one to tick was the Bernhard Morissette. We've listened to the public. We've listened to the presenters. We're listening to council. We've listened to the legal. It's for us now to make a decision. But there's nobody here, I don't think, at the beginning of this process would have even entertained it this far if we ever would have thought that it's 35 or 100, or 35 or 97. Because for us to live here, and I've heard it tonight from council, it doesn't make sense. And you know what? It never made sense to me either. But we carried on with it because we told the taxpayers of Kirkland Lake we weren't going to shelf the KPMG report. And we didn't. And we've listened to all the reports. Is there anything to do, anything going forward? We can do nothing. We can do nothing. And it stays at 35%. I don't see any appetite at this council chamber. I could be wrong. I didn't hear from Counselor Barker that it should jump to 97 or 100%. So we just do nothing.
But...
We do nothing.
So are we going to have an official...
The only way...
Bernie wants to sleep this week.
Well, Bernie, yeah.
He wants to know what's going on. And he's right. I mean, we have to tell them something.
Well, I think we do know what's going on. And we've heard it tonight. It's zero, it's 35, or it's close to 100. Or we can set in motion this, I'm sorry, the area tax ration rates.
Can I say something?
No. Thank you, though. But I don't think we want to do that. So we just leave it as it is. That's one option. If another council going forward wants to entertain Bernhard Morissette, we can't stop that. Nobody could stop that. But I don't think we have to act by whether we should vote yes or no. And you can correct me, please.
I would like to speak to that.
Please.
If you do nothing, then there's no decision to be attacked or appealed or an application to quash brought to the Superior Court because there's no decision. So certainly, it's within council's power to do nothing. If you make a decision, that decision is subject to attack at the Superior Court. So I hate to give advice in open council, but I would advise you to do nothing.
Counselor Morgan.
And this is the question I wanted to raise, Joanne, is, do we need a special meeting, quote unquote, to do nothing? Because that's what we're going to do, right? Is do nothing.
Well, if you do nothing, then this is the last conversation you'll have about it until it goes on.
And can we all agree that this is the last conversation tonight, then?
So Joanne, you tell me we don't have to vote or anything? We don't have to have a paper out saying this is what's going on?
The suggestion is that if you're going to vote to repeal that bylaw, that would come back. Otherwise, this would be the last conversation that you have.
I'm happy with this, so it better not come back.
Just to help into that, do not direct your C A O to do anything. Just to clarify, because there was some applause, do not direct your C A O to do anything.
And certainly, please excuse my rudeness, but I'm sorry you're not on the agenda. And I'm terribly sorry. I'm sorry. So now we're going to move into the 18. Is there anything that, Peter? Okay. Thank you, and thank you for your advice. So the next item we got is budget process. So item B is the 218 tax-supported budget process. So Peter, you want to talk on the schedule, right? The only thing is, what we're going to do is we're just going to wait a moment. If you want to leave, please do so quietly so that you don't disrupt the rest of council.
Thank you. So what I'd like to do is, I have the treasurer here as well with me. We're trying to change up the way we do the budget process to make it more transparent, get some input into the budget before it comes back to council for a final decision in April. What I have submitted in this report is a process that involves public engagement. I will be asking the public a couple of questions. There's probably going to be more than these three, but these are the standard three ones. We are, I guess there's no secret that we are having a significant financial pressures for the municipality in 2018 and for then, for 2019 and 2020 as well. We have a lot of infrastructure that we do have. That's normal for any municipality. However, Kirkland Lake has a lot of deficiencies in their building infrastructure. So this is a simple process request. Is what I'd like to do is release a public version of version one of the 2018 tax-supported budget, have a couple of open house meetings, set a date that council can hear delegation... date that council can hear delegations, and then set a final date of when council will deliberate and make a final decision. My background in previous municipalities, the budget process is actually about six months long. So I am about to do what I know customary to do in condensed version of it, given that we do have an election this year. So we, I'm trying to ensure the budget is passed before nominations open, which is May 1st for candidates, just to de-politicize the budget as, as possible, as best I can. It's, one of the important things to note is the, whatever gets released on Friday will not look like what shows up on April the 3rd. So the reason I say that is because we know, we're currently in the works of having some legal agreements, negotiating with legal, through our lawyers, actually through Paul, and some of the stuff will have significant impacts on the budget. Having said that, until I have the Ts crossed and the Is dotted, I have to be transparent and release what the real numbers are, should those negotiations fail. Right? So I'm cautioning council that they, they just be aware of that fact because the numbers will be a rolling effort. As the weeks progress, and this is no different than any other municipalities, as the weeks progress, the numbers do change, from internal forecasting to, to just updated information. So it's pretty straightforward process. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Counselor Kylie.
Yeah. Peter, I do appreciate the new, the new look at the budget as far as public input and their ability to have delegations present to council. Some of us on council, I'll let them speak for themselves, but have the same concern as I. We have not seen budget GLs or the GLs from, from the town since March. I don't believe they're up to date. I don't know how you can do a budget from today when we haven't even got December 31st numbers to look at. You usually use that as a comparable in the budget process. The way we are looking at it, it's, it's like projecting income and expenses, it's, it's not really a, my idea of a great way to do a budget. I don't want to scare the crap out of people, but when we look at the, the numbers that you've come up with, yes, they will change, there's no question, hopefully for the good, but they're pretty scary and it's, people are going to be wondering what's going on because it's more than 18%. So I would have, I know Counselor Shamir and I have talked about this. I would have appreciated as a councillor and as the finance chair, the ability to go to you, which I did four or five times in the last five, six months. I know this, this budget process has been very difficult because our accounting system is not up to date, but for, for council to have some input before this stuff went out to the public and some direction would have came from council as to what we're looking at from a percentage wise of increase and that didn't happen. So I don't know how this budget coming out Friday makes much sense to me, I gotta be honest with you.
So a couple points. So the majority of municipalities in Ontario actually pass the 2018 budget in December of 2017. So they wouldn't have had year-end numbers. So when, go through the budget process, when I was with the City of Toronto, the City of Toronto budget process is literally 11 months, 11 months long. And they do what is called forecasted year-end. So managers have to forecast what the, what they think their target is going to be on December 31st, 2017. Same thing happened in the City of Guelph. The City of Guelph has passed their, my previous employer passed their budget the first week of December for 2018. Similar to the water rates that we passed in December, we did a forecast to the year end. Historically from what I, historically, I just noticed last year the budget was passed in May of 2017. So you're five months into your supposedly inappropriated budget that you're allowing, you know, 40% of your budget to be expensed without a council resolution. So it's kind of, you're playing a bit with the, you know, the municipal act is pretty straightforward that you have to have, council has to approve a budget in order to expense it. People can charge it. So historically, the historical practices, I can't speak for. What I can speak for is what's going on the last six months. Obviously, we had a change of leadership, we've had a lot of significant staff changeovers. The system is not up to par, as you mentioned. The, the other thing too, to publicly note, is the perhaps previous administrations, council would give direction, I'm not sure if the direction came in open meeting or closed meeting, but according to the CAO bylaw that when I was appointed, I don't have the authority to make service adjustments on my own. That has to be directed to me in an open meeting. So to answer your last question, if you shall wish, council is at liberty to direct me to come back at a proposed budget with my recommendations of what the reductions and adjustments will be. Having said that, that would eliminate a lot of the public input because then it would basically be the CAO and staff are basically saying, pick a, pick a, we're only plowing snow during business hours, for example, to save X amount of dollars. So now you're having the public basically decide, is this a good recommendation or not, versus having that conversation with the public first to see, maybe they like only having the snow plowed on business hours, Monday to Friday. So that's, again, it's that council's liberty to direct me as they so wish. I thought that my approach was not to put anyone in a corner to have that open dialogue with the community.
I do appreciate what you're saying, Peter, about the systems update, but it's March, we're almost a year. We, and it's not fair to this council to plan a budget for 2018 without any information of what took place a year ago. We need those final numbers. The GLs should be brought up to date so council can see what the year-end was. And can I ask you, when's the last time they've been updated or how are they, if they're updated to November, that would be a good start. Because normally what we would do in November, we would have the November statement and in the finance meetings and, and you're right, then project what it's going to be to year end and we always know there's billings coming in January, February and March, making adjustments along the way for that. We didn't have that opportunity, so it makes, makes this process very difficult to, to understand how we're coming up with these numbers to begin with. So maybe you could elaborate on where the, the GLs are. I, I don't like counting on somebody's in-house spreadsheets. We've never done it that way before, we've had the GLs that we could see. That's proof and, and a good audit function or governance function from, from council to know that it has been posted and charged against those accounts and we haven't seen that.
So the, the accounting system is being updated as we go and we can actually produce those to give you the latest that's in, in the system. So this past week, we were actually inputting the budget into the accounting system and we are able to provide those numbers. Today's, today's Tuesday. We could have them by Thursday.
That would be appreciated. I think we'd feel a lot more comfortable where we're at and where we're going. And that's, that's the whole part of the budget process that we need to know. Thank you.
So we could receive those in a way of a budget variance, our variance report?
It would be the spreadsheets that, sorry, the GL printouts that you normally got in the past.
Okay. It has the summary pages for it as well, so you don't have to flip through every one. You can go, but they'll be available on, through email on the system.
Yes, I'll, I'll check what was provided in the past.
Yeah, so you don't have to go printing seven or eight copies of like this.
Okay, yeah, that's right.
Thank you.
Counselor Morgan.
Peter, I'm just wondering, could you give me a bit of color as to how you see the, the public consultation feeding back to council as far as, like, what do we do with that information? Because it feels a bit like council is shirking their responsibility by sort of pushing it off to, to the public. I mean, we have a pretty good idea what the public's gonna say. I mean, they're all gonna want an increase in their tax bill and, you know, and more services and, and, you know, I mean, that's just normal, right? But can you, because I'm, I'm just not quite sure, like, are we, are we then like obligated to act on that? Like what, what are we, what are we actually doing?
So it's, it's customary to just seek input on budget adjustments. 2018 has a lot of one-time issues that we're dealing with in 2018, so they won't necessarily show up on the GL from 2017 because they didn't exist, right? The majority of the pressures are legal issues. And so what, I guess, I guess when you go to the public, right, when you put up the new number, and as Counselor Kylie said, it's above 18, you ask the question, okay, where would they want to presumably reduce? Right? And then whatever feedback they, we collect, that helps council look at their priorities. And you can, councillors can do, get whatever they, what, however they normally take constituent feedback, they would process it the same way. They are not obliged to follow what the public input has to say, they are not obliged to listen to the delegates that come to council. It's just a public process, people like to speak during the budget process and this gives them an opportunity to suggest ideas, to perhaps also participate in owning some of this, the solutions. You know, like there's, there's a lot of stuff out there that, like, no, like, let's not sugarcoat it, there's gonna be a lot of tough decisions. And we've had a couple meetings on some of our service areas, the airport was one of them. And if I was to have that airport meeting next week after I've released my budget, I'm pretty sure there's gonna get a different conversation. Right? So it's just one of those things that I'm trying to educate the public, right, with information, Q and A's, have our managers stand up and answer about their budgets and how they derived at it and what their pressures, and just, just help them be more informed. A more informed citizenry, in theory, helps make better municipal decisions because it theoretically holds their elected officials more accountable. So that's all, it's a, it's a process, it's, it's, it's more or less, it's the, the process counts more than the decision when you come to public engagement. If that helps to clarify?
Well, it helps a little bit. I certainly, I understand the, the Q and A side of this thing, I think that's, that's helpful to the public because I think there's a lot of misconceptions out there as to how certain things are dealt with. So I, I think that part of it is good. So it's really, and just additional information to help council make their decision. But I mean, we, we can, we still are, use our normal feedback mechanisms as individual councillors to, to come to these decisions. We don't have, like, this is not going to be compiled into a report and, you know, we ignore it with our peril or whatever, like.
Part of the, the open house meetings will not be compiled into a report. However, there is, we've set up an email and we have a form for residents and citizens to fill out. Anything that's submitted, written, by written documentation will be included for public record. Right? So we have a process to do that in place, we're setting up a process, starting to kick, to kick off with this Friday. And then whatever you get, it'll be a public record, just like any other communication we get for other topics.
In your experience, do you find you get a balanced feedback on these things?
In my experience, I've never had the financial challenges of Kirkland Lake. But truth be told, I'm used to single-digit numbers, you know, under 5% sort of thing. During those processes, yes, because what you have, like in my previous position, I had the, all the user rates and fees, whether they were transit, whether they were parks and rec, and I had a model that, a three-year plan that I would take all the user fees to be more, more reliant on the user and less off the tax base. And of course, those are the, I used to have, it used to be called the Pete Show at the council meetings because all the user groups would come and delegate, don't raise the fee, don't do this, or, or if we're gonna raise the fee, make sure you put it back into the, into the park, into the, into the arena. Right? So the, the money stays within the infrastructure. So, and council, for the most part, you know, agreed to it. And I, I think overall, they have, you know, you have different lobby groups that come and say, we need, you know, bike lanes, we need accessible sidewalks, and council takes a lot of it. It is 50/50. I think it is most of the time.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, just to further on Counselor Morgan, I think it's important that, the public consultations are important. I think the public has a right to, to give their opinion and that's certainly the way we, not just our municipality, but all municipalities are going and that's transparency. But what I do disagree with, Peter, is to infer that there may be a difference of opinion on the airport because of what you may present is incorrect and I don't think you have any basis of making that inference. Because I don't believe there would be much, perhaps any difference. But I certainly agree with you that public consultation is extremely important and we heard it tonight from one of the presenters, asking for more public consultation. So going forward, and I think the problem too is that, you know, we're throwing these numbers out 18, 20%. I mean, people in Kirkland Lake aren't used to that. We've had a tax decrease every year for, I believe, the past 10 years, I believe. So when they hear in, numbers like 18, 20, it's really scary and, and people start wondering what, what's going on. Well, as you said earlier, the reality is that two issues out of our control would add up to more than 20%. And that's out of our control, nothing to do with operations, that we've been spending money. These are issues that are out of our control at the present time and that's probably over 20%. So in some ways, that number 18 to 20 to 25, I've been hearing, if you're at Tim Hortons, it's as high as 30. That's what scares the people, you know, and that's what scares, putting these numbers out to the people before we have a chance to digest it. But we know sitting here what those challenges are and we have to deal with those challenges. But we don't want people to think that these two challenges are outside of our control. And if they work out well, well, we could be carrying along the same way as we always had in this community. So to say that we're in dire, dire straits and we're financially in a, in disarray, I think is incorrect. And, you know, because of the fact that we've given these tax decreases in the past because we've cut, we've cut, we've cut. And I don't know where we can cut anymore, we're starting to add some people back on, onto our employment and you know what, that's good. Because that puts us in compliance and I think that's important. But for people to think that because it might be eighteen or twenty, um, you know, I think we're just scaring them, you know?
Yeah, I think, I, I don't think that I can sugarcoat the numbers because we do have a lot of old infrastructure that has not seen a dollar.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Right? So, like, it's not, you know, I, like, I'm not trying to scare them. I'm just trying to stick to the facts.
No, you're right.
And a lot of the pressures are on the infrastructure side. A lot of the pressures are on the operating side. As the KPMG report stated, right, we do do a lot of services that other municipalities that we are compared to don't. Um, which is fine, but, uh, this is fine. Uh, there has been a ten-year zero percent tax increase. Um, last year, there was even a discount because of when wastewater was removed. There is no other Ontario municipality that I have been able to find that has had ten consecutive years of zero percent tax increase. So, Kirkland Lake is unique. Is it a financial crisis? Is it a financial pressure? However you wanna terminology it, uh, at the end of the day, uh, a lot of challenges are, happen to all be piled on in the twenty eighteen budget. Uh, can we extend and pretend? Perhaps we can do some stuff. Perhaps we can move some budgets. Perhaps we can do some more, uh, um, analytical stuff. I don't know, but that's, that's, that's a broader discussion, right? So...
Yeah, I mean, throughout our province, there, there's sixty billion dollars in infrastructure deficit throughout the province. So, it's, it's not, when you live in a community that has, is a hundred years old, like we are, there's bound to be, there's bound to be many, many infrastructure deficits within our community. But that doesn't separate us from the caps, the cochrines. They, they had the same. Sixty billion dollars in infrastructure, the communities, the municipalities. That's what they're fighting to the province for, you know? To get more funding to address these. It's not just a Kirkland Lake issue. It's an Ontario issue. Counselor Tom, and then Counselor Shami.
Twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen has not been a normal year, quote unquote. Um, we've had a lot of pressures put on our administrative and administration and staff, and I think that needs to be recognized, um, and acknowledged that they went above and beyond their call of duty and picked up a lot of the balls. Unfortunately, things had to give, and unfortunately, General Ledgers might have been one of them. But moving forward, we have a new process we should be embracing. Um, it's a brand-new start. Let's hit the reset button and do things the way we can do and optimize things the way we can and the way Peter's leading. I think, um, you know, we have a wealth of knowledge at hand. We hired Peter. We need to put our confidence in Peter. Uh, if we didn't have confidence, why would we hire him? He's doing things the way they need to be done. And, uh, I commend him and all the administration and staff for the excellent work that they've been putting forward, uh, picking up the loose ends and trying to carry things through this hard time. Moving forward, Peter, I, I like your presentation with the budgets, public consultations. Since my first running for council, people wanted more of a voice. They are getting that now. The transparency is there, and I'm super, super happy to be a part of this, this change moving forward. A little disappointed, I won't be continuing on with the political career for a little bit, taking a little bit of a break. But, you know, it's been a breath of fresh air to see this change come in and, and to have, you know, things put in place. Eight-plus, ten-year, well, I can speak for the eight years of, of, um, decrease in taxes. It scared me. How do you plan for long-range, cutting back all the time, cutting back all the time? Where are we cutting? Well, we're starting to see where we're cutting, areas that we shouldn't have been cutting. Now it's time for council to step up and make decisions on what services can we afford to keep? How can we keep them? And moving forward, how can we build our viability and sustainability of the community in a positive and constructive manner, which comes with long-term planning, which comes with the little bumps and scrapes right now but for long-term, um, benefit to all the taxpayers of Kirkland Lake? So, I commend you, and I'm looking forward to your process and, uh, moving forward.
Counselor Shami.
Yeah, Peter, just a few things I don't like when you say it's a Kirkland Lake problem because it's not a Kirkland Lake problem. Like Tony said, I come from a small town from Southern, Southern Ontario, the east, and they have the same problem. It's a town the same size as Kirkland Lake, the same thing, firefighters, pool, ice surface, and they have the same problem. The pro, the problem is, the problem is downloading, and you, you said that too. What should we go ahead and do things before we're mandated? That would be a mistake because the, the new government will come in probably in November, and we don't know what's gonna happen. Oh, June, sorry. Is it June, the election? Yeah, June, okay. Well, it's faster than I thought. Oh, that's right. It is June. And we don't know, we don't know what's gonna, gonna happen after this. And whatever is going on right now will be probably changed. And we've been, I know you work for big government. We're, I'm more used to small government. And the same problem in Wawa, SoCal Mary have all the same problem. They don't have the money. So, what they were talking in the last two weeks of the provincial government is to raise the HST to fifteen percent or fourteen percent or thirteen point five. They weren't sure exactly the number they were looking at, but that money would go to the municipality. People won't like it, but that's what the discussion is right now. Because like Tony said, the same problem is happening everywhere in Ontario. And actually, it's happening everywhere in the U.S. as we've seen. The U.S. is also the same problem. Quebec has the same problem. They have bridges that fell a few times. So, it's not a Kirkland Lake problem. It's, it's, it's a provincial problem. It's a, it's a country problem, and it's, uh, the world problem, basically. Because all the money was spent in the forties, fifties, and now stuff are falling apart. Can we do, uh, fix everything in one day? No. Should we start slowly? Yes, but you really have to watch because you might do something and then two years from now, the government might say, "Hey, you know what? We have money to fix this." "Oh, we already fixed it." So, it's, I know it's, people don't like to wait, but basically, that's where we are. So, like, we have been doing the last ten years. We have just basically stayed afloat. So, if we have to fix something, we do fix it. And at some point, we got money and we got manage to fix more stuff. And basically, in a small town, that's how it's run. I know you used to go off in Toronto, but I'm sure they had the same problem too because, uh, Toronto was looking for two, that two percent I was mentioning. Toronto was the one looking for two percent. All the rest, AMO, which Municipal Association, were looking more for point five or one percent. And Toronto said, "Whoa, whoa, that's not enough. We want two percent." Because they know the problem they have. There, there's only so much money and there's only so much tax we can pay. And at, at some point, we have to try to make a balance, and like Pat said, eighteen percent will not be, will not be the, the amount. It might be, I don't know how much it's gonna be, but it will be for sure a single digit, for me anyway. And what has to be cut, that's, it maybe is not what has to be cut, it's what cannot be done. So, there's a, you know, a balance of it. Uh, maybe we cannot do this this year, and maybe we could cut a little bit here. So, there, there's, there's things that we could do. Um, I'm not gonna mention any right now because that's not important. But I don't know what, that's basically what, yeah. And I, I don't take that personally, really. It's just, you're, you're a southern boy from the big cities.
No, I, I think, I, I think though that, uh, the mayor was correct. There is two significant issues that are driving this. And, uh, both of them combined are over two million bucks. So, um, you know, if, if we didn't have those, then, then I think we would have a definitely different conversation. So, uh, they're both legal issues, right? Uh, we hope to, uh, be working with one of them to resolve it. Uh, council gave the go-ahead on the one. And, uh, hopefully, well, the other one is just a matter of, um, regulatory, um, compliance. So, with more to come, I guess, when the, when the numbers are released.
Counselor.
Yeah, uh, sorry, Tom. Everything's not beautiful. We're not in the best of shape. There's, there's, uh, there's a lot of pressures on this budget. And, uh, I, I do commend Peter for, for recognizing that. The one thing that happened, uh, I mean, during this budget process, which it seems like it started six days ago, because, Tom, you and I were there, and you did the preliminary presentation to us. And no disrespect, Peter, but we knew this process was gonna change. And I think we all agree, uh, transparency and, and getting, uh, input from, uh, from the public is, uh, is great. And that's the route we should be going because I think we will come up with some different ideas. And we'll also get a feeling for what, uh, the people, uh, how strong they feel about cutting some services. I know I've talked to another community, uh, in Capis Casing, and, uh, the treasurer was here earlier this week and was rather interesting. They went on a hiring freeze for the year, and they also went, uh, uh, on a zero-budget increase capital, no capital expenses, uh, from the previous year. And I said, I asked him, I said, "How did it work?" He said, "It wasn't easy." But he said, "You know, and I'm not trying to scare anybody working at the town hall." But he said, "We cut ten jobs, and things are still being run relatively well." So, there are tough decisions to be made, and, uh, we have to move forward. And I think the, the one thing, Peter, that was missing, we knew this budget process was gonna change. But you did tell us there was gonna be a training session for council before this went ahead. It didn't happen, and I know the pressures that you're under down, uh, at, at the town hall with new staffing changes, hiring and whatnot, but that, what was, that's what was missing. And then all of a sudden, we got the preliminary budget. So, it kinda scared the crap out of me personally. Just, I'm trying to be upfront, and I, I don't mean it to criticize you personally, but, uh, we, we've gotta be a little more open and, and move things ahead quickly. We've spent so much time on Bernhardt and Morset that it's, it's pulled us away from a lot of other issues like the budget, unfortunately. And I just wanna mention something. I've heard this for the last three years, and I've had it up to here. We haven't raised the taxes for, for ten years. Come on, people. You didn't take, raise the tax rate. Assessments was up. You got more money in, in, in the tax levy. So, we can't say we didn't raise taxes. That's, that's not a fair way to say it.
No, we say we...
And no disrespect, Tony, but...
No, I understand, but we said we didn't raise the tax rate.
But, but Tony, Pat is right.
Yeah, but that's how we can keep the rate as it is.
People pay more, though.
Well, of course.
Yeah.
Because assessment goes up.
So, we didn't really...
Yeah, at the end of the day, I wanna know what's come out of my pocket.
But our decision is on the tax rate. So, what we're looking at here, we had some good, good discussion, um, good open discussion. But we are looking at the schedule, and that's what Peter's... And, and we have a Friday, the twenty-third, as, uh, the release of the budget. We have the twenty-sixth as an open house, that March the seventh as an open house. Tuesday, this, March the twentieth, as public delegations to council. And I'm wondering how that would change from an open house? Like, I, I would think in, uh, public consultations, uh, staff gather the info, they present that to council. So, are we looking for additional public consultations?
Similar to Bernhardt and Morset. Residents will delegate. Uh, maybe they showed up to the, the open house. The only thing that the council will get for the April meeting is anybody who submitted written correspondence.
Okay.
Right, so...
So, so then on, on Tuesday, the third, then council would deliberate and vote on the final version on, of budget. So, for me personally, I think the, the schedule is fine. I'm, I'm a little hesitant, uh, pushing us or putting it to the third. But I'm wondering is, what is council's thoughts on, on this schedule? That's what we're talking about, the schedule.
Tony, the problem was this, is there's no way, so he comes in, Peter comes in the third and presents, and he says, "This is the budget." Then we say, "No." Well, it's not final. It will, it won't be a final, from previous experience. "No, no, go back and cut this, do this." Like, where does go to council? So, we have a saying to this. Like, I don't see any place in there.
Well, he's saying April third, and, and, and is that an issue? Is April third an issue with anyone, anyone else? I see, is it a...
I don't see a problem, but it will not be the final, it won't be the final. It might be the...
So, April third is a problem then with the final decision?
Well, it just, yeah, it's not final.
That is a, a problem? Is that, is that what other counselors think as well? April third may be a problem with the council decision. If it is, then I think we have to maybe approve everything except the third.
It should be a council deliberation. That's what we should have, I think, Peter. We, we have to be able to talk somewhere.
Yeah, on the, um, sorry, uh, any council meeting, so on the twentieth of March is a regular council meeting.
Yeah.
So, you can definitely deliberate after that, the public delegates as well. I could put it on the agenda. We can extend it, uh, again, if the third is too, uh, too early, we can extend it.
No, 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 we, we have to talk some, that would be a good, good time to talk, really.
And then extend the vote for, to a different meeting?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Yep.
Well, I was gonna say something similar, but it kinda goes back to my earlier question for Peter is that, at the end of the day, the buck stops at this table.
It does.
We're the ones that have to make the tough decisions. People can tell us all they want. At the end of the day, that's why we were elected. That's what our job is, is to make those tough decisions. I'm not shirking it to a public meeting. Like, you know, the people can tell me all they want, but at the end of the day, I'm the one that has to make the tough decision.
Yeah, and for sure. Counsel makes the final decision. So, am I hearing then that we shouldn't do the twentieth meeting?
I'm just, I'm just saying that we need to leave the tail end of this thing open.
Yeah, and that's what I think we're hearing from everyone.
There's gonna be a lot of, you know, back and forth on this. I mean, if the numbers are that wonky right now, then there's gonna be a lot of hewing and crying at the end.
So, then if April third was worded, council deliberations?
Yeah, Tony, I think we need, uh, April, would it be the twentieth after that to the next meeting?
Uh, probably around the seventeenth.
Okay, seven, yeah, seventeenth. At that, the third, uh, of April, we will be able to, as, as Jean-Gene was saying, discuss some different ideas about cuts, whatever, and, uh...
We, oh, sorry, and, uh, also ask for, uh, uh, different tax ratios for, for the treasurer to bring back for the, for the seventeenth meeting. I think that would give us a little more time.
So, I, I, I'm seeing some support for this schedule with the elimination, with taking out the final vote. Is that fine with you? Is that fine with council? So, can we move ahead with that?
Just, just, uh, one more point to Peter. Like, budget, Peter, like, historically, it's been really, really important for us. It's been followed. Like, Bonnie and Wilf and Nancy, they followed the budget pretty, pretty religiously. So, if Bonnie had two million, she would spend, she would not go over two million. She would try to keep everything at two million. And that's why when she presents sometime, I don't know if you noticed, but she, if she brings something new, she would say, "Well, we could do this, but we won't do this instead." And she would always try to balance, and Wilf does the same thing. I know you mentioned one time to me, you said, "Budget is just a thing you follow, you sort of guideline." But it's more, in town, it's always been more than a guideline. It's been, it's been basically the law.
You mean, just to clarify, you mean the actuals?
Yeah. No, 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 the budget. So, if Bonnie at the end of the year is supposed to have spent two million dollars, she would come at two million or less. She doesn't go over that, and she, she knows that. And it's pretty much, every department has been like this. So, our budget has been really good. The only sometime problem we have was a TPR that sometime, because they have more, uh, other problems, people sick, and sometimes they would go over budget. But we've been pretty good, I would say, for every, every budget line has been pretty much followed. I don't know if that's what you wanna follow, but that's how it's been for the...
I guess I'm a little bit confused in what, what you, where you're leading with this. Is it to, for the twenty seventeen numbers, the actuals?
Yeah, yeah, it should be close usually.
Oh, okay.
Most of them should be close. That's why I, like Pat said, I would like to see the numbers because usually, they're pretty, pretty bang on. Uh, we don't have much money to, to go their side, and a few times we had deficit, and usually it came from, from the TPR. Uh, and that, and Nancy tried, but, and this year, I think she raised her budget a little bit, and we should be, I think what she said, we should be closer than, hey, Pat, the TPR?
It's gonna be shorter than that.
Shorter bit again, okay.
But not too bad.
Not too bad, yeah, yeah. So, it was easy, so we would take that three hundred thou, oh, easy. We'd take that three hundred thousand, like Pat said, and we would just put it in the next year and start from there. I don't know, like, if you don't, if you don't know the final numbers, I don't know how you, like Pat said, I don't know where you start. I know you could predict, but if you predict, I could predict to you that most, most town department will be on, 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 on the line.
Yeah, it's, uh, yeah, there's, uh, there's a, there's a couple of things, um, just to get into it. We have obviously the two things that are over two million dollars. We have the commercial assessments that appealed, successfully appealed, that we have to pay back about half a million bucks. And again, one-time issues. And again, one-time issues. And then we have, um, some, uh, contract obligations we have to pay out in 2018. So it's hard to use, like, it's, I understand where you're going with the twenties, like the, the year-end information. And by all means, we can delay the entire budget process, like that, 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 but, um, but I think that, uh, assuming all those come in, assuming all those things come in, we got about three million dollars, give or take, of stuff that did not happen in 2017.
Yeah.
So, like, like that's, I guess that's the, that's, that's, that's all that we have to correct.
I don't know, Tony might know, or Pat even, the business tax, they always appeal every year, no? And they, they don't win every year?
No.
The business tax?
We haven't heard anything for a few years.
Well, what, what's happening is I think people are aware that there's corporate tax lawyers out there that go around to all these huge corporations. And what they do is they say, uh, there's no charge for our service, but, uh, uh, we want a percentage of the taxes that we save your corporation. So large corporations do not appeal on the local, so we have, say, a store in Kirkland, but there may be two hundred stores throughout the province. They appeal on all two hundred. And the decision is made on all two hundred.
The problem is, that's not new thing, it's been like this every year.
It's been like that every year. We had to pay over a half a million dollars back a few years ago.
Yeah.
Four or five years ago.
Okay, so it's not, we don't pay every year, but it happened, I remember it happening.
It's nice, it's nice when we don't have to pay.
Okay.
But there's not a lot of years when we don't pay.
It's not every year, it's whenever the, the verdict comes out.
Yeah.
Councillor Morgan.
I just want a point of clarification, Peter. With the numbers you're releasing on Friday, you're putting out comparative numbers for 2017, right? Are you putting out the budget numbers for 2017, or will we have the actuals by that time?
It will be the budget that was approved for 2017, plus the, um, to-date actuals. Whatever, I believe the date was November or-
Okay, this, this is where I'm a little concerned, because putting out incomplete actuals for 2017, I think is going to be a little bit difficult for the public to understand, I think. Don't you, don't you agree?
But budget is, we're not, uh, when you do budgets, it's what you approved last year's budget to this year's budget.
I, I know what the budget is, yeah. But what I'm saying is that putting out the 2017 to date is not really accurate, is it?
Like the, how, all the numbers that have come in-
Yeah.
-to date.
It's not, because we, because it's not complete yet.
Well, nothing will be complete till after the audit, which is in June. That's the official completion. When our auditor does the audited statements. So nothing will be complete till then. And that's normal. So-
But where he's, where he's going, he's right though. Because if you look at, the, the numbers we looked at for year-to-date, 2017, for, I think it was Roads and Public Works, uh, there were about a half a million dollars under budget. Now, and then we see a big increase, as the public is going to see, well, it was one point seven, all of a sudden, now it's two and a half. What are you guys doing?
Well, I think, I, 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 I agree, but I think I'm getting a bit confused. Councillor Jean-Guy is saying that most of the time, the numbers come in to budget. So whatever the budget was approved in 2017, if it was two million dollars for Public Works, the assumption is you're going to come in close to two million for year-end.
Okay.
And what, what I'm saying though is irrelevant of what the operational budget is. We have a lot of one-time expenses that never showed up in the 2017 budget. So there's a whole bunch of pressures, close to three million dollars, that did not, was not part of the decision you guys made in May. So that three million dollars was never budgeted for. So whether the numbers come in to budget, over budget, under budget, it's irrelevant. We got a three million dollar pressure that was not part of the budget last year. So-
Right, but year-over-year numbers for the finals in 2017 are going to look skewed, aren't they? Because there's going to be numbers missing from those 2017 actuals. Is that not correct?
By the time you, the vote is?
No, by the time Friday, when you release these numbers.
Why do you post the actual, like, really? This, I think that's what Todd is saying.
Well, either we leave it out.
Yeah.
It's either accurate or we leave it out.
Yeah.
Because I, what I'm saying is to put it in incomplete gives a really skewed look between 2017, well, quote-unquote, actuals, but they're not really, right? They're only year-to-date.
Yeah, it's standard accounting practice.
Are you going to put year-to-date? Well, no, I mean, you can't do that.
Yeah, but we're usually up to date with the numbers, as Todd says.
Or you, sorry, or you do a forecast to what your numbers you think you're going to be by the end of the year.
Okay, you could do that.
Right? So I, I can go either way, whatever you-
Well, we need to have some, like, comparator, same to same, like apples to apples. We can't have apples to oranges, is what I'm getting at. So whatever we put out, I just don't want to see incomplete numbers. If they're incomplete, they need to be totally identified that way and, and make sure that people understand. I mean, I, I don't see the point in putting it out if it's not complete.
The other thing too, Peter, I think there's, like, I, I, I'm concerned and I'm, I'm sure the rest of council is, because that time gap between our last March report, basically financial report, to now, and trying to get the numbers up to date, are we carrying a big deficit through to 2018? That's going to add another quite a bit of pressure, and I think we are going to have a deficit. But I don't know what the number is, that's what's scaring me. You know, if it's a half a million or eight hundred thousand, we're in trouble. So-
Yeah, for the purposes, I guess, for the public release, perhaps if we hide the actuals and then release those as part of the council's decision in April? So we're comparing budget to budget?
Yeah, it's-
Unless, unless you can have them brought up to December, I don't know. You're going to update the GLs, I don't know how, how far that it's going to take us. Is it November, December? I don't know. You, you'll know when you do it in the next few days.
They, they will still not be final until they've been audited.
But, but is, are they September numbers or is it November? That's, that's the issue.
Yeah, they, they're actually up to January twenty-third, all the invoices that we got and were entered into the system, but there are still some invoices still to be entered.
But just more?
Yes.
Like, like, Peter, to do your budget, so, so you have one million in 2017. In 2018, are you putting one million or nine hundred thousand? So you would have to know how much did we spend that one million, or do we need more, we need less? So that's why, like Pat, I'm on his way on budget, is that you have to have an idea. You, you could forecast for yourself, but you're not hiding it, because really, like Todd said, it's a useless number, really. Actual are useless for, for the purpose of a budget. They are good for you to plan your budget, but for majority of people-
Yeah, yeah, so if you have a million-dollar budget, we know today inflationary pressures. Energy went up, so I can budget, whatever the budget was last year for energy, add the four point two percent in for hydro. We know what the contract, the collective agreement payroll numbers will be. If we paid a hundred thousand dollars on somebody and we know that they're going to get this collective agreement raise, we budget that in. So we know a lot of the operating impact, right? We already know that, uh, budget to budget. Now, last year, was somebody off sick? Uh, did they leave the position? Was the position vacant for six months? So it shows that the budget was low? Perhaps the actual will come in six months low, for that hundred thousand dollar salary, we're only getting fifty thousand dollars. However, that doesn't mean we're going to make a budget with reduced salary, right? So you're going to do your budget based on your programs and services and the budget. Like, here's what you had last year, it changes to the services, right? Is a budget process that, it's an open process. So, uh, last year, we were funded for X amount, like, the two things that are adding to, for example, the CAO's budget. Last year, the CAO's salary and the executive assistant's salary was omitted. It was just a mistake, right? So it looked, the numbers looked, hey, the CAO's budgets looked good. All of a sudden, now it's going to look like a variance, a negative variance, because I was hired. So my six months and my assistance, so, so you, you need to compare, going back to councillor Todd, uh, budget to budget. And perhaps we provide the, the actuals, perhaps council gets the internal actuals and the public actuals get released in April. Um, I'm, I'm flexible with whatever the process is.
Councillor Morgan.
I guess where my big concern is coming, Peter, and, and this is something that we've always had to grapple with, is we have seasonal things that happen. There's insurance payments that go out just at a specific time of the year, or there's, you know, snow removal that only happens, you know, at the tail end of the year and the very beginning of the year, and there's, there's all these, these things. Now, in these actuals that, are, is ever, is all of that captured? Or is there still, like, some of that that's, that needs to be lodged?
Well, I think, as the timeline progresses, everything will be kept. Official answer is, when the audited statements are done, everything is captured. Before the audited statements have been approved and reviewed by an auditor, it's, they, they can change.
Reasonably close. They haven't been too far out, but there could be some surprises.
Yeah, I, I don't anticipate the regular operating budget to have significantly year-end. We removed some program support dollars from tax onto water. So if anything, those things should be coming down, right? So, so your concept of a deficit, um, that has a little of a cushion. Delayed some of the hiring, right? So, uh, so I, I don't anticipate it. I don't anticipate surprises on the year-end operating budget. The other stuff, the three million, give or take, is just the known facts that that's new to 2018.
Tony, can I just clarify, because I opened my big mouth about the hiring freeze and what Capus Gasing did? I do not want people or, uh, senior management team going back and worrying about their jobs or their staff's jobs. These, how Capus Gasing did it was through attrition retirements. So I'm not saying we're going to be doing that, but tough decisions have to be made. And I think sometimes you do get some ideas from, from the public, and I, I like that idea. Doesn't mean we're going to do it, but we should be listening, as Tony said. So I just wanted to clarify that point. Your job's safe.
Tony, can I just, one more, one more word to help Peter? And Peter, you could look at this, because you mentioned earlier, and, and I, I didn't say anything, the cannabis, you said, is downloaded to, to the municipality. But, but what they, what they seem to have agreed at is, it's going to be a dollar per gram, and that one dollar forty percent will go to municipality. Forty percent will go to the province, and twenty percent will go to the federal government. So can you check on this and see, but that's what the agreement was. Has it changed, not changed? I don't know.
The only agreement we've been officially served notice with is that the feds will pay the province. The province has yet to distribute, if we get anything.
The agreement was, they were both in there together. And there was forty, forty, twenty.
We haven't heard from mis-sponsors.
Hopefully, it's going to be like this, yeah.
Okay, um, I have a resolution. Uh, maybe we could read it if there's, unless, I, I'm not trying to, uh, uh, close off this conversation, but if everybody's done, I think we've, uh, we can carry forward.
I have a motion that's moved by councillor Kylie, seconded by councillor Barker. The council accepts the chief administrative officer's request concerning the annual budgeting process and that council approves this year's process and schedule as identified in the report presented by the chief administrative officer, with the April third meeting being amended to council deliberations and no vote on final version.
All in favor?
I thought we changed the-
We did.
The last one was the old seventeen?
It'll have to come back, it'll have to come back as a bylaw, so if you, you don't vote it on the third.
All in favor? Okay, thank you. Thank you. Uh, item two is, uh, Hosea, you can just stay right there. And that is the new aquatic center reserve fund donation account.
The donations were captured in a reserve fund for the new pool. And this is a procedural request for the treasurer to get council to approve the movement of the donation to actual capital expenses for 2017. Since we are now at the end of constructing the pool, we need to use the funds from the donation. So we are requesting that these be moved to the capital expenses for 2017.
Okay, so this is out of the reserve fund?
Yes, out, out of the reserve fund.
Okay, and I, I just want to make sure that the public doesn't confuse this. The fundraising efforts are not over, they're, they, they continue. And they're continuing today and they'll, they'll continue going forward as well. But this is just to move that money because it's in a specified fund?
That is right.
Okay.
And we didn't mention the amount because we didn't want to come back to council whenever we get some money. But right now, we have a hundred and four thousand in the reserve fund to be moved to capital expenses.
That's a, that'd be a bylaw coming back at the end of the meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, item three.
Okay, this is a, a letter that we have received from the Canadian Mental Health Association. They are, um, this year looking at doing their fourth Ride Don't Hide event on June twenty-fourth. In the past, they have, uh, they have raised over more than thirty-two thousand dollars for local mental health programs and initiatives, and they're looking to do it again. So I have a resolution that is moved by councillor Barker and seconded by councillor Kylie. The council supports the Canadian Mental Health Association's Ride Don't Hide event in Kirkland Lake on June twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen.
All in favor? That's carried. Thank you.
The next item is a letter that was sent to council. It's a request from the Kirkland District Hospital. This is a, an official request that comes from their active wellness and recreation committee. So they're asking for council to consider a discounted corporate rate to their employees. They are hoping that they'll be able to advertise this discounted rate and more of their employees will take advantage of memberships at the complex. They have, the hospitals, the jointly have over three hundred and fifty employees that live in the Kirkland Lake and surrounding areas, and they're hoping that the town will partner with them.
Councillor Kylie.
I do like this idea of a corporate, uh, discount rate, but I think there has to be some rules attached to it. Whether they have to get a minimum of fifteen or twenty people, whatever that number is. And are we offering this to other corporate citizens?
Okay, um, uh, well, how I look at it is this, is we've had a request from the, uh, from the hospital, um, and we would, uh, direct our, our director of recreation to, uh, to, um, take this request and put together some type of a program that may or may not fit, uh, and then, uh, bring that back to council, whether it's in terms of, um, of the, of your semi-annuational, in June, we have to look at user fees. If you want to look at making a special user fee for corporate, um, you know. So if we could direct that back to Bonnie, if that's possible, through, through you. Is that, is there any other? Councillor Roman.
I, I'm, I'm actually just against this request one hundred percent. You know, it, it's nice that they'd like to see a reduced rate for their employees, but that's not fair to, to the rest of the people in town. And I, I'm, I'm just against it.
Thank you. You know, so, uh, what do we just go for?
What I can do is do up the resolution and you can vote on the resolution, as you said, to have it be brought back during the budget process?
Okay, or- Or during the user fee process.
So the, the user fees will be approved at the same time as the budget?
Okay.
The thing is that some of those people working there are not from Kirkland Lake. We're certainly not going to give people from out of town a discount.
Sure.
So there's a lot of problem with this question, like, I'm more on gym side. Uh, I like the idea. If they want to form a group, like Pat said, and of twenty-five and come every Tuesday night, maybe that would work. But again, there's a lot of unknown, really.
But I think what we're going to be doing tonight, I, I agree, but I, I think we, we still direct, uh, Bonnie to come back with, uh, with, uh, a way of, uh, of perhaps accommodating or not accommodating, that's-
So it's a motion that's moved by councillor Kylie, seconded by councillor Barker. The council directs the director of community services to take the requests for reduced rates by the Kirkland District Hospital and bring back- and bring back recommendations through the budget process.
All in favor? All against? Okay, thank you. And, and we'll, we'll have additional further time to discuss this, depending on what Bronny brings back to us. Okay, Director of Economic Development and Tourism, getting some, some better news here. Wilf, if you want to come up, please, and you're going to talk about the potential partnership agreement between EnergyCap and the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake for the solar project.
Yes, I'm going to, and that's a really tough act to follow, so if I feel like this, I can imagine what you feel like, as does the audience. Please interrupt me with questions as we go along. It'd be a lot easier. The report that I provided to council dates back to, or takes a project that dates back to 2013. At that time, Capus Gasing Energy approached the town with an idea of setting up a solar farm to take advantage of preferred rates that the IESO, or at that time, the Ontario Power Board, was offering. And basically, the project was to form a corporation between the two municipalities. They would provide the project management, construction. The municipality would provide the land and then learn about more of the management. And it would be taking advantage of a preferred rate under the FIT III contract, which comes out with a municipal addition to about 22, sorry, 0.298 per kilowatt hour. Three areas on Archer Drive were identified as potential sites for a solar farm. That was brought forward to council. Council approved it. Process went forward from there to, under bylaw 13-099, council directed mayor and chief administrative officer to negotiate a partnership agreement and to set up the corporation. We've had some stumbling blocks. There was an issue in 2015 with Canadian Malartic having concerns about having the farm on areas where they have mineral rights. That was moved. There was an issue where the original technology partner, Strathcona Solar, went into receivership and a new partner had to be found. All these issues came, went, were dealt with. In July roughly of 2017, communication started up again. There was a tremendous shift within our own municipality as the people in charge. It took us some time to get back on the same page as with CAP. In November, we did meet with them. We did express some concerns. Issues were use of the industrial park for such a purpose. Were the numbers still right? What, how had anything changed in the last four years? During that period of time, I was instructed to take the project on and do some due diligence work on it. Due diligence work at this point involved dealing with lawyers, having an independent assessment done, taking a look at the financials that had been provided to date. It took a long time, longer than certainly I or our partners at CAP wanted, but we went through all the processes. An independent audit showed that the financial expenditures that had been incurred to date were not from KL Solar. That KL Solar, sorry, that is the corporation that was formed between CAP and Kirkland Lake is there. It's in good condition. Our auditor took a look at the numbers and felt that they were within the acceptable expenditures. They were financed by Capus Gasing Energy. There was no more, money was, no money was borrowed or anything like that. In terms of the technical audit, they took the information that we have on the equipment, on the sunlight, on the production capacities, every aspect like that. And when they ran the numbers, it came out very close to what Capus Gasing was providing us. If anything, Capus Gasing, I think, or Cap Energy has been fairly conservative in their estimations and that. There were some aspects that we were not comfortable with. We had passed the bylaw in 13, in 2013. There are discrepancies between the bylaw and the formation of the corporation. They're small, but I think they needed to be addressed. The partnership agreement, there were issues there, simple issues. What's the term? What's the right to assess or to buy in, buy out? All these things. So we had gone through that, was working with the CAO on that, and we put together basically a shopping list of things that had to be addressed. We had another board meeting with our partners, put them on the table. They were amendable to correcting these because, as somebody said, good papers, good friends. And that is what we're bringing forward in this report now. I think that the project still meets the original intent that council expressed in 2013. Still fits within the same technical parameters, and I'm comfortable that it fits within the same financial parameters that was promised to council at that point. So I'm recommending to council that we proceed with the project. We do have issues with time. Really, we should have had construction going in the fall so that we could capture the highest producing months, which are basically April to August. We're not likely to be able to do that right now, and we don't want to delay it any further. I, a conservative estimate would be that each week that we're not producing, we stand to lose $10,000 on, or lost revenue. You have to understand, of course, that the FIT contract is a 20-year term, and you only have so many sunlight hours in that 20-year term. Anything you miss is at your loss. So we've put forward a suggestion to council that bylaw, well, that we address some of the governance issues and move the project forward. Bylaw 13-099 be repealed and a new bylaw reflecting the recommendations of the review be passed. That council authorize the mayor and chief administrative officer to negotiate and execute a partnership agreement inclusive of any land lease options with EnergyCap Gasing Energy in order to move the project to the next stage. That Sentinel Solar, and they are the technology partner, be given permission to perform geotechnical studies on the target sites in preparation for construction. That the above recommendations be implemented as soon as possible, as further delays will have impact on the financial viability of the project. We held an open house, and that was one of the recommendations that came forward from the due diligence to have greater public involvement, because it has been five years. We held an open house last week. About 35 people or so came through the doors. Overall, the response was, I think, positive. There was a lot of questions on, are there opportunities for local companies? Are there employment opportunities? When does it come into effect? I think that between Cap Energy and Sentinel Solar, those questions were answered very well. I did not notice anybody leaving from the open house in a, in a huff and a puff. I think that the project in general is supported by the community. But we brought it up to this point, and I think we need to put the ball back in council's court. If you want the project and you want to go ahead in a timely manner, I stand by my recommendations. Do we have alternatives? Yes, certainly. But we, we, again, will run into the question of delays, financial consequences. If we simply say no, the project's dead on the water, we probably would run into legal consequences. I fair, I feel it's only fair to advise of that, and I think I should stop.
Councillor Morgan.
Yeah. You know, to, to use a phrase that my friends at Lighter Candy stole from me, pitter-patter, let's get at her. I mean, this has been, this was a fantastic project when we approved it five years ago. It's still a fantastic project. I have every confidence, Wilf, in your ability to do proper due diligence on this project. Let's please move forward.
Any other, do you know what a discussion?
That'll come back as a by, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry. I, I did want to mention that during the public house, we did have a comment on the snowmobile trails for the third part of the solar farm. We are working with the Golden Snow Drifters to define an alternate route. We feel that we can still stay on the same property outside the fenced borders. We'll advise of any difficulties or changes that may come about from that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that'll come back as a bylaw if there's no, if there's no other? Yes. Okay, just before we start the, we're into the bylaws. Okay, before we start the bylaws, I, I'm, we did miss a part of the beginning. And that is to declare any pecuniary interests. And I do have a declaration to declare, and that's on bylaw 18019. Is that, yeah. I've, I've declared a conflict on this since the beginning, so Todd, Todd, I'm going to ask you if you could come up, please.
Okay, introduction, reading, consideration of bylaws?
It's moved by Councillor Barker, seconded by Councillor Kylie. The bylaw 18-019, being a bylaw to amend, bylaw 12-019, by rezoning lands at the southwest corner of George and Queen Streets from rural to residential low density, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
So no questions? All in favor?
Do you mind signing that?
Sorry, Tony, you're, you're toast.
Okay, bylaw 18021.
It's moved by Councillor Kylie, seconded by Councillor Barker. The bylaw 18-021, being a bylaw to authorize mayor and the chief administrative officer to execute a partnership agreement with EnergyCap Gasing Energy to secure and develop solar photovoltaic projects in Kirkland Lake under the Ontario Feed-In Tariff Program, and repealing bylaw 13-099, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you.
It's moved by Councillor Barker, seconded by Councillor Kylie. The bylaw 18-022, being a bylaw to authorize the treasurer's recommendation to draw down from the new Aquatic Centre reserve fund donation account in its entirety to be applied toward the 2017 capital expenditures, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Item eight, notices of motion. None? Confirmation bylaw, please.
It's moved by Councillor Kylie, seconded by Councillor Barker. The bylaw 18-020, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held February 20th, 2018, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Councillors' reports? None? Thank you. Additional information and the adjournment bylaw?
It's moved by Councillor Barker, seconded by Councillor Kylie. The council adjourned its regular meeting of February 20th, 2018.
All in favor? Thank you. That's carried. Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.